Technical issues. I'll call the meeting to order. This is the March 10, 2020, meeting of the Town Plan and Zoning Commission for the town of Fairfield. The first item on our agenda are the meeting minutes from March 3, 2020.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Francis. Second by Commissioner Corcoran. Commissioner Francis, do you have any comments?
Very detailed minutes. Excellent job.
Well, it's the reason that this is in here for Beacon View is because we collectively addressed it as a document. And so it's primarily the review that Mr. Went had prepared before we went into executive session with a few additional facts and things added. And then the findings at the end, which we had asked him to come up with based upon, you know, the individual commissioners' statements of agreement with each other and adding different things. And so, you know, from my review, I think we hit all of the different points that we each, that we each, you know, collectively threw into the mix. The statement of facts doesn't need to be specifically an enumeration of all of the evidence, you know, from the record on which we rely. The conclusions and the bases for denial are what I consider to be the important aspects of the minutes here. But if there are different conclusions or other important facts which anyone feels like they would like to put into the -- Commissioner Corcoran?
I'd like to just make a couple of suggestions as to, on the second page, under the statement of facts, in the third paragraph from the bottom, it says Laura Poole, Town Engineer, reviewed the trinkas engineering report. And when you follow down through, it isn't clear where that report came from. I'd suggest that before the words trinkas engineering, we put the applicant's trinkas engineering report to make it clear that that's something the applicant put forward. Not true?
No.
No, it's the --
Mr. Green.
Yeah, that was a --
Submitted through Joel Green on behalf of the neighbors.
Right.
So it's the neighbors' expert. We can refer to, similarly, do we refer to the traffic engineers? We can say it was the neighbors' engineer, the neighbors' expert.
Right. And then on the page, what's labeled Page 4 for us, on the third paragraph from the top, talking about the suggested sight line, says the applicant's engineer's response indicates that based upon updated surveys and analyses conducted by Land Surveying Services LLC, the maximum ISD available to the left from the location of the Pro's driveway is 301 feet. I'm suggesting that we add another sentence after that that says that this is based on the AAS HTO standard, whereas all the others are CONDOT.
No, the, that statement was just simply a statement of how far they have a sight line for. It's not a statement as to which standard was being used. It's just saying that based on their review of the survey, they've increased their previously reported sight line from 291 feet to 301 feet.
Okay.
That's irregardless of the --
And I think the CONDOT at 28 and 1/2 was 314 to 315 feet?
Right.
Something like that.
Correct.
But at some point, I thought that they brought up the other standard.
They did, ASHTO. And under ASHTO, I think it was like 291?
Yeah, it was, it was less than, right, it was, it was right at 301 if you took the average speed.
Average.
Right. That's all. Okay.
Okay. And I think...
So...
So it's just that one?
So then the sum of your, would be on Page 2 of the minutes, you want to make sure that referring to the trinkas report is the neighbors' expert to clarify the source of the --
Right.
That's right. Okay.
Good. Good. Let's collect up any other, before we move to amend the motion. Does anyone else have any other comments on the minutes? Okay. So Commissioner Francis, will you accept an amendment to add the thing there? All right, good. And Commissioner Corcoran, you agree?
Yes.
All right, good. So, motion is to approve with that amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? So those minutes, as amended, are adopted unanimously. Next is new applications to recommend a public hearing. 528 Black Rock Turnpike, zoning compliance application of Alfonso Camerata for a 23-unit residential development pursuant to 830G of the Connecticut general statutes in resident C-zone.
Just to ballpark where this is, this is on the corner of Castle Avenue and Black Rock Turnpike, a lower Castle Avenue, I'm sorry, lower Black Rock Turnpike, just before you get to the exit 24 traffic circle, a couple doors down from Miller Nissan, if you know where that is. You know, Castle Avenue runs parallel to Kings Highway, a block north of Kings Highway.
Thank you.
But that's...
Public hearing is required, 830G.
Move to public hearing.
Okay. A motion by Commissioner Noonan, second by Commissioner Corcoran. Anyone else have any questions for staff or any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? It's moved to a public hearing unanimously. Next is old business. The first is zoning regulation amendment, application of Black Rock Realty LLC to amend Section 21.16 of the zoning regulations in the Transportation Commercial Park. And I'll read these together, they're related. A and B, 160 and 219 Ash Creek Boulevard, special permit and coastal site plan application of Black Rock Realty LLC pertaining to the construction of a mixed-use commercial and residential development in the designed industrial district.
Just a point of order, Mr. Chairman, I've just noticed on the agenda that Commissioner Braun did disqualify or recuse herself in this application, so we inadvertently listed her as being in attendance here. We should, that's, that's an error on our part.
Yeah, that's good.
So she has recused, and Commissioner Gordon was present at the last hearing.
Correct. And let's just make sure in the minutes, I didn't actually...
Yeah, surely, the minutes do reflect the fact that she recused herself.
Yes. All right, very good, very good. Thank you.
So that's, that's an error on our part on the agenda.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, just this evening, we handed out an exhibit that was requested by the commission at the last time, which is a, was a redlined version, effectively a blue-lined version of the amendment that was requested at the last hearing. You now have that exhibit, as it's only been a week since we've had this hearing. I am not fully prepared to offer a, an extensive staff commentary at this point. I don't know where the commission stands, but from the staff perspective, it may be prudent to table this matter since we do have until the 7th of May to make a decision.
I appreciate that. I also am interested in having a little bit more time than ordinarily. We have two weeks in between meetings, and this one was only a week ago because we had a special meeting. And this is a pretty major application, major development. So there's, I would also be interested in tabling the matter for my own purposes. Commissioner Corcoran?
My move that we table this.
Okay. Thank you.
Second?
Second from Commissioner Noonan. So, motion to table by Corcoran, second by Commissioner Noonan. Any other comments? I kind of jumped in there, but... Anyone else? Very good. All right, well, Mr. Went and I appreciate this. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? So three A and B together are tabled unanimously. Next item is coastal site plan, 2101 Fairfield Beach Road, coastal site plan application of Brian Steinhauser pertaining to the construction of a single-family dwelling in the Beach District.
Okay. This application seeks the construction of a two-story with attic, a single-family dwelling. The previous dwelling on the site was demolished in November of 2016. The proposal meets the standards of our Beach District regulations. This house is designed with an open pier foundation to accommodate storm surge. This file was referred to DEEP, and you have an email in your packet that confirms DEEP's review, that there are no inconsistencies with coastal management policies. You also have a staff report in there. I do have an exhibit that I was kind of showing around, I can talk about it if you, if you want to, but it is our opinion that it complies in all respects with our regulations, so we therefore recommend its approval.
Yeah. Thank you. Very good. Anyone?
Move to approve?
Okay. Motion to approve by Commissioner Noonan.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Corcoran. All right, thanks. Commissioner Noonan?
Based on comments from Mr. Went, that it complies with his notation of the DEEP approval, and so we see no reason to deny it.
Very good. Commissioner Corcoran?
I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
First, is there any, was there any interest in public comment?
We had a couple people review the file internally. I didn't, I haven't received any requests for public hearing, if that's your question.
Secondly, on the chart that shows the compliance with the various regulations, I've forgotten exactly where it is, but I think one of the sidelines was supposed to be 10 feet and it's listed as four.
The combined... Oh. There is a listing on... They're showing an existing garage on the survey that's on the Pine Creek side of the property.
Right.
It has an existing setback of 4.9 feet, where the regulations would presently require 10. So that's an existing condition that's not proposed to be changed.
Oh, so the garage is still there?
That's what the survey has indicated, yes.
Because the survey doesn't... Oh, there it is. I see, it's still there. And similar discrepancy in the lot coverage, is that also...
Well, again, the lot coverage that existed prior to, from their original survey from February of 1999, has a lot coverage of 35%. The reg allows you to have what exists, or 20%, whichever is greater. So in this case, they're actually reducing the lot coverage from 35% to 28.5. So it's getting closer to conformity.
Good. Okay. Anyone else? I agree. I, you know, reviewed the plans, the CAM report, the comments from staff and such. I mean, they're, this is as clean as it gets.
What did we decide last time about the house on the other side that wasn't there? Like, this one isn't there?
The issue of the, the question of the regulation that calls for the setback existing as the date of adoption of a regulation was the opinion of this commission not unanimous. It was a six to one vote, I believe, that the regulation is that it stands for the proposition that whatever the setback was at the date of adoption of the regulation is the regulation that holds.
Or corner to corner.
In the event it were vacant at the date of adoption of the regulation. That's correct.
So, here, there's no controversy.
Right. It's, that was, that was kind of, and I will refer to the exhibit, but if you recall, it was right at the, this, this house, the lot, if you can see it, the lot in question is here. It's essentially in line with the two adjacent structures.
Yes.
It doesn't project out because of the situation of the lots to the west of the...
No, but I was questioning the consistency of our applying our regulations.
We have consistently applied the regulations since the adoption of the Beach District regulations to mean that the, literally that the setback that existed as the date of adoption is the setback that holds, even if that setback is closer to the water than the two adjacent structures, or, like in many cases, further away. So even if the house, if the two adjacent structures are 50 feet from mean high water, and you've got a house that's 75 feet from mean water, and you demolish it, you don't get to move it to that 50-foot line either. You have to hold that 75 feet. So, so neither can you get closer to the water in the event that you are more distant than the two adjacent structures. So that, so that cuts both ways. And more often than not, frankly, it's the case where someone is held to a stricter setback than the two adjacent structures. It was a fairly extreme example in the last case, but I think a fairly uniquely situated property.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. The motion is to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Application is approved unanimously. Next, we're going to move into our public hearing. I will call items... No, just one. 635 Mill Hill Terrace, special exception application of the town of Fairfield pertaining to additions and renovations to the Mill Hill Elementary School in the R3 zone.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, ladies and gentlemen. For the record, my name is John Fallon. I'm here tonight representing the Fairfield Board of Education and the Mill Hill Elementary Building, Elementary School Building Committee. And as the call indicates, we make this application for a special exception approval with regard to an addition and improvements to the school, which is located in the R3 zone at 635 Mill Hill Terrace. Before I start my presentation, I thought it would be good to ask Tom Quinn, who's the Chair of the Mill Elementary School Building Committee, to just give you some background in terms of the engagement of that committee, the process that it's employed over the past many, many months, very diligently, and the recommendations that were reached. Then I'll give you an overview of the application, and we have our consultants here, and we will endeavor to make a intelligent, focused, and brief presentation. So, Mr. Quinn?
I'm not that tall. Good evening, everybody. This is my third school. Hopefully my last, by the way, Mr. Chairman. But I did Riverfield, Holland Hill, and now this one. They're all basically the same. 1955 is basically when they were all built, in that timeframe. And they really have the same set of problems and opportunities. This one had been a little bit more difficult because of the topography. It was a lot different, and a lot more expensive to, to get to do what we had to do. But this school will end up with 58,000 square feet compared to 56 for Holland Hill, 61 for Riverfield. Okay? And all of the things that we've put into other schools will also be in here. Okay? ADA compliant, okay? Fire code, life and safety upgrades, fire, you know, prevention upgrades. So we bring everything up to code in this school. And meanwhile, we will have this school at a 441 enrollment capacity. This committee has been working on this for over a year now. And a year because we started out with our mandate that we had to look at three different variables, a 504, 441, and a 378, which took a great deal of time and effort to call out all the numbers. But we did, and we, we finally got all the numbers, and the decision was made to go to 441, not by the committee, but by the Board of Selectmen and Finance. So that's what you have before you, is what they asked us to do. And that's the 441. What I'd like is, where's my architect? Right behind me, okay? To come up and start the process of giving you... Okay?
Thank you very much.
Tom says, as you, as you know, it's a 41, 441 capacity.
Just lift that mic up. Just...
Yeah, 441 capacity. And as you'll see, when we have a brief presentation, we are obviously with that capacity, creating what's known as the core areas that are necessary to support that student enrollment, including the gymnasium, a media center, and a cafeteria with two, with a full kitchen and two full serving lines. We've obviously had this proposal before, and it has been approved by the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, and the representative town meeting. We did receive an inland wetlands permit approval granted unanimously in December of 2019. We also had a code review process on January 20, 2020, and all aspects of the code comments have been complied with, and the plans have been modified to address that. So at the end of the day, we're eliminating all the portable classrooms, we're updating the facilities of the current building, as Tom says, to all fire code requirements. We're installing a new sprinkler system, installing a new HVAC, fresh air and air conditioning system, and we're providing in this, as we have in the other schools that we've done, a very secure entry vestibule with appropriate increased security measures and consultation with our police department. And we're going to replace the additional, and add, replace existing and add additional lockers to accommodate our increased enrollment. So what we want to do at this point is our preparation. David Stein of Silver Petricelli will walk you through briefly, I think Jim's already handed out the handouts or not? Oh, he has. Okay, thank you. Any of the boards that we're referring to here, so that you won't have to... There'll be some boards there that we're not going to refer to tonight, but it's already part of your package. For example, the phasing plan, certain of those boards will not be used unless you should have questions. So David will talk to you about the site plan and the architectural plans. Then we'll have Mike Galanti, who's here, who will review his traffic analysis that we submitted, his traffic access and impact statement. And then we'll have construction phasing reviewed by Amar Shamas, who's right here of Gilbane. And then we'll have a few concluding comments, subject to answering any questions you might have, so...
David?
Again, my name is David Stein. I'm a licensed architect with Silver Petricelli and Associates. So, good evening, everyone. I'd like to briefly walk you through the site plan, and then I also have some floor plans and elevations to give you sort of an overall flavor of what you're doing, what we are doing on the project. As was mentioned, this is a renovation and alteration project to the school. We are essentially adding five additions, which you see on the exhibit here in gray, of classroom additions. I'll actually go sort of in a clockwise manner. We have the arts and the music classroom addition that's located just here at the bottom of the page. We also have the kindergarten classroom, which is four classrooms that we are adding on, and we're connecting that back with other support spaces, so continuing the loop of the circulation path. We are adding a small addition here, which is part of the kitchen. It's essentially the freezer and the cooler addition. And then a stage or platform area that's off of the gymnasium, rounding out to the administrative wing that's located to the front of the building. So we're adding five additions. These will all be sort of phased in, and Amar will talk to you about the overall phasing of the project. From a site plan perspective, our challenge is based on the topography. We have a very challenging slope that's located here, so that addition is really right at the top of that slope. So we are not building into the hill. We are essentially right at the top of that plateau. It's essentially flat in this area, but grades do begin to move upward in this area. Relatively flat here for this addition, this addition, and that addition. Terms of circulation, and really the major improvement that we're making on this project is its site circulation, its separation between the buses and the parent drop-off. At every educational facility, that's our main concern, is to be able to create good site circulation on those peak times in the morning and the afternoons of pickup and drop-off. So what we have done is we've created this bus loop. This is actually for the buses. There's plenty of queuing that can take place from here all the way down and around that loop and to be exiting out. And we've designed that for that potential capacity of the 441. What currently exists on the site is actually this parking area here, which we're renovating. All of that converges. So we're actually separating that, as you can see, this is now landscape, and the parents will be able to come in, go around this circle, and be able to drop off and reduce that queuing. So we're taking a large amount of circulation off of Mill Hill Terrace and also at this intersection, so there's good separation between that. We do have some landscaping improvements that we're making. We are repaving a majority of the lot. We're actually, this is most of its improvement in terms of paving that's located here. As you see in our parking statistics, we are increasing the overall parking on the site, and we are also improving landscaping in terms of keeping the most mature trees in place and doing other landscaping.
Question for you then?
Yes.
So in the parent drop-off, the existing parking lot, are you changing the, you know, the area of that paved area in that space, or the parking spaces at all, along from the entrance to Mill Hill Terrace down to the circle?
So yes, there are some widening that's taking place to allow for parking here, also new sidewalk that's located here, sidewalk that's located here. So yes, we are reworking this area, some regrading, but it's, it's essentially in the same area, but we're reworking that for drainage and for widening to be able to get those parking spaces that are here. There's parallel parking spaces that are here, and then our rework around the circle. This area right here is actually just an impervious area. It's pavers. It's not a landscaped area, so...
That's where the fence is right now.
Yeah, and we will be creating, there is a fence. We're going to be able to cordon this area off that's located here, so the play area will be secure. There's a gate because services will still need to come in for deliveries and so forth.
Will the gate there from the addition on the back across the play area, will that be visible from Mill Hill Terrace, do you think?
It will. You can see we have some landscaping buffer that's located right here, but as I follow my cursor, this is the, this is essentially the perimeter of the fence, and the gate is located right here. We've actually pulled that further back and tied in right to the addition.
Right. And then, what's the, the travel lanes on the parent drop-off for, you know, both, both directions? How wide is that from the end of the parking spaces on the left to the parking spaces on the right? Did...
They're approximately 24 feet, these two. 24.
Yeah, the travel, Aristolus, we're the landscape architects, so the travel lanes are 24 feet, and the circle for the parent drop-off here is one-way. But this paving is flush, so the service vehicles can drive right over.
Thank you. And Commissioner Francis, you have a question?
Is there any reason there's, is this on?
It's on.
Is there any reason there's no tree, or trees in that large green area there?
In this area? Within here?
The field?
Further, further out?
No, in. They're trying, yeah, there.
Right here? Yeah, this is all, this is actually the, this is a sloped area, so it's, the topography actually slopes fairly aggressively. That's located here. You may be able to see that on your site plan. We have, we have the topography that's located here. This walkway that is essentially located here is the ADA accessibility to get down to the playground, so...
Playground's down there.
Yeah.
No trees.
So, no trees. We're keeping that as that open play area.
Okay.
Right, that's a, that's a field in the back of a school for all the kids to go out there and play soccer and, you know, run around and do their thing.
I thought it was a slope.
Well, it has a slope, but that's where they run and they do their thing. I mean, you know.
I have a question.
Yeah, yeah.
When the parents drop off the students, where do the students enter the school?
Okay, so we have a few pathways to be able to get into in terms of entry. So from here, there's, there's actually a pathway where they're able to come in if this gate is open, and then they could enter here. They could also come directly across this crosswalk. There's a sidewalk, so we have ADA accessibility in this entry, which currently exists right now. So we have those two entryways to come in to the gymnasium.
Good. Okay. Commissioner Levy?
Thank you. Is the driveway that's closer to Mill Hill Road, is that exist...
Is the driveway that's closer to Mill Hill Road, is that existing or is that going to be changed?
This is this entryway that's right here? It's approximately the exact same location. We're altering the turning radiuses here, but it's essentially in the same location.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Great. So just quickly, just go to the floor plan, just to give you an overall functional program aspect, and then I'll go to the elevations for you. So this is an overall floor plan, and I believe you have these same in your packet. So as I mentioned, the administrative wing that's located here, we're improving this immensely in terms of security and visibility. I'll show you the exterior elevations that show you that. Now the administration has good visibility out to that bus drop-off. The addition that's located at the bottom of the page, we have music and art. Those are separated from the academic wings. And then each of the grades, kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, and fifth, there's four, there's four classrooms per that. So the addition here is for kindergarten that's located there. We connect back to the existing building. The small addition, as I mentioned, here for the freezer and cooler, and then the last addition that's located here, which is for the stage. So that gives you an overall sense of the floor plan of the work that we're doing. And then, as mentioned, internally, we're improving the air conditioning, fire sprinklers, so from a code perspective, we're improving every aspect of the building, including handicap accessibility. Yes?
What will the, what will the security be like at the entries to the gym that you mentioned from the parent drop-off area? Because I know you're beefing up the security in the administrative area in the front.
So what we are doing is, so we're creating, we're creating this lock vestibule that you'll only be able to get in from one point buzzed in and get to there. We also have the same situation that's located here. You can begin to see how that's also cordoned off, and currently, this is all card access at this point, so in terms of lockdown procedures and so forth. So, so we are creating a vestibule here. We also have a vestibule here. There's a, there's a vestibule that's located here, and you can see we also have it at the addition. So we create those, those sort of two-step stage entry points.
I appreciate that. The other entrance that you mentioned, sometimes is open, sometimes is not, the gate, that does not have the secure entry?
This, this door here allows it? No, we do. It's located right here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then I'll just quickly just show you the exterior elevation. So the same rendering that you have in your package, this is a, this is a view of that entry. It begins to show you that, that, that secured door. We are putting ballistic level glazing in the front entry here. The administrative suite now has plenty of glazing to be able to look out with good visibility. The architecture really begins to match what's there. We're using brick as its material, just two tones of brick and metal panels as it, as its facade. The heights of the additions are essentially the same as the existing building. There might be some different levels just based on how we transition the new building to the, to the existing building, but essentially, the overall heights of the building remain one-story and remain the same. Other than that, there's the mechanical units that, just like what you currently see, will be adding more to just over those primary, primary spaces. But the overall architecture of the building, we are, as you can see from these renderings, we are, we are keeping with that, and any of our additions do not go above, above the existing roof level. So with that, I will...
Yep. We have one question, sorry. Commissioner Francis?
Will all the mechanicals on the roof be shielded?
Currently not. All of the existing units that are there that we are keeping remain, and those are currently not shielded.
Do our rigs require shielding? I have a question.
Commissioner Braun?
Where are the portable units now on the site?
Okay. So currently, there are two portable classrooms, one which is located directly here, and the other one is right under the footprint of our existing building.
The red area on the left?
So we have one, we have one that's located here, and we have another one that's located right here.
Right. It's directly under the proposed building.
Under the proposed location, correct.
I was just looking in the code, the code review was done like about a month ago, right? So, a lot of the comment, that's fairly recent for a code, a lot of the comments say that a whole lot of more information is needed. Is that updated in all the plans? Okay. Do we have the wetlands approval? Because I was just looking at their, why does this need a wetlands approval? I don't see any wetlands on the site.
Can you use the microphone, please?
They did have jurisdiction, there were regulated area on the property.
There's like a lake off-site, is that why?
Yeah, and there was some, there's some pockets of wetland soils that, you know, are not being disturbed, but were gave the jurisdiction. And I think Mr. Went probably has the copy of the wetlands.
I'd love to have the permit approval, but it says here in the code review, was that, was the code review done af, obviously it was done after the wetlands permit? It just says, "Plans as presently shown do not address conditions of the approved wetlands permit." What does that mean exactly?
We got our wetlands approval in December of 2019. The plans that were on file with the P and Z at that time were not totally consistent with some of the conditions of approval. Ms. Jacobson pointed that out at the code, and we revised the plans and submitted amended or revised plans to this commission so that they would reflect all aspects of the, in the wetlands permit.
I appreciate that. So this was, this is, this is the update, this big package? Thanks a lot.
Correct. Any other questions?
I do have one, one other question. So when you said 441, is that the, the new capacity or the old capacity of this?
The new capacity.
What's the existing capacity?
378.
So we're anticipating more kids, and I guess that'll be dealt with with the traffic expert? More, does that, I don't know how it works with schools. Does that increase the traffic when you have more kids, I assume?
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Galanti, who will introduce momentarily, will obviously address the matters of traffic. But where this all comes from is back in 2013, 2015, the Board of Education did what was known as the Fairfield Public Schools Facility Plan, 2013 to 2024. And the Board adopted that plan in August of 2016. The primary purpose of the plan was to produce a blueprint for meeting the school system's needs for school districts over the next 11 years based upon projections for enrollment. And that's identified in another document called Fairfield Public Schools Elementary School Facilities and Scenario Planning Study, which was done and adopted on October 24, 2017. That's what leads us here today. Those studies found the need for that flexibility increase in enrollment. But leading right into that, and I thank you for that, Mike Galanti did prepare a traffic access and impact study. That's part of your record. He's going to give you a brief overview and answer any questions. Mike is obviously a traffic engineer with Frederick B. Clark slash Hardisty and Hanover. Mike.
Good evening, Mike Galanti, Frederick Clark Associates, and now Hardisty and Hanover. I'm sure everyone has the report, and I'm sure you've gone through it. I'm just going to highlight some of the issues tonight and not go through all the details and all the figures I have in front of me, but all the figures that are on my boards are in the report itself, so there's nothing new that you haven't seen yet. And I'm just going to kind of run through the process. As you know, traffic study was completed for the school as it is today. We did actual traffic counts in February of last year, many observations over a period of months, both in the morning at arrival and dismissal in the afternoon. Those visits included me and other people from my office, and I believe the police department actually on one of the days. We did the actual traffic counts and identified number of walking, number of school buses, and we observed some of the congestion delays as far as parents dropping off and picking up and so on. So we included that in the traffic study itself. This figure one is just simply the, the red dots are simply the intersections included in the analysis, which of course includes the driveways on Mill Hill Terrace and on Mill Hill Road, both morning and afternoon. Quickly, the figure two, just simply the inventory of the roadway conditions, sidewalks, no parking signs, speed limit signs, and pavement markings in the area itself. That's part of the analysis to identify existing conditions. I'm going to quickly skip over this, but this simply just shows all the traffic data for all the intersections, morning and afternoon. The morning peak was 8:15 to 9:15 relates to the school arrival in the morning, and the dismissal peak hour was from 3:00 PM to 4:00 PM, and that's the basis of the traffic counts and the basis of the analyses. This sheet is actually figure 11 in the report, and probably the most important figure in the report. Obviously, there were traffic volumes and traffic analyses, observations that I think in a school type of study are very, very important, but this figure just simply is the summary of the recommendations and findings of the traffic report in combination with the, the project team, if you will, as far as modifications to the plan, modifications to the campus. The key to any school project is to separate the parents from the school buses, and in my opinion, traffic delays and congestion are not as important as pedestrian safety. So key, well, any project, but more key in a school is where students cross, where parents drop off, where students are crossing walkways, and in this case, the separation of student, parent drop-off in school buses. As mentioned in front of the school today, the school buses drop off at the main entrance to the building itself. That remains the same in the future. Currently, parents drop off on the Mill Hill Terrace side, if you will, or the back of the school in a way, and they, they basically exit into the main driveway of the school to exit to main, Mill Hill Terrace. So they mingle with the school buses coming in and out, and it's at a location today where it's very close to the intersection coming out of the campus itself. The key to this plan was really to separate that, and we were able to do that, and quite frankly, add capacity to where the parents drop off, where the parents may park in the morning and, and come in the afternoon and park and maybe walk into the school itself. So that was a key to the, the plan here, which was very, I think, very successful as far as being able to do that. The blocks are all the recommendations. You have the closure of this driveway here. You have the entrance that's located to the west, if you will, on Mill Hill Terrace. That becomes, well, it's a two-way driveway today, but it's two-way as far as the parent drop-off and exiting of the parent drop-off. The parents come in, they have the same parking spaces up against the fields, if you will, come around and drop off at the circle, and do not exit to the main driveway of the school, but exit back out to Mill Hill Terrace to the west. We recommend removing vegetation to improve, improve site distances, but also to remove vegetation between, between the street and the campus for visibility from, for security reasons. So it's a twofold recommendation.
Right. So has, have you received confirmation that in fact, that medium, that media, median strip between the parent drop-off parking lot and Mill Hill Terrace is in fact going to be cleaned up?
Part of our recommendations and discussions we had, and the police department agrees with it, I would have to say it's going to be part of the plan to clean it up, you know, under brush, if you will, so you can see through.
The vines literally are, are above the street signs. You can't read the street signs because the vegetation is so overgrown there.
Very overgrown, so it's for multiple reasons, the removal of that was recommended and part of the plan.
I would like to understand from the applicant in this hearing, who is going to be responsible for doing that, and who is going to be responsible for maintaining that in perpetuity?
Okay. I probably shouldn't answer it, but someone will, from, coming from behind.
I don't know, Mr. Went wants to cover that, but clearly, I think it would be as a, it would be something that it's, it's public, it's on in the town, well, it's all-town property, right away along Mill Hill Terrace and along the school property.
Say that again, if you would, please.
It's all-town property. It's a combination of right away along Mill Hill Terrace, and then obviously behind the property line is on the school campus property.
Right.
Obviously, both are town-owned.
Right. And so my understanding is that there's been some debate about who's going to maintain it, and that has led to a stalemate.
I'm not aware of that.
And as a result, we have street signs that are overgrown with vegetation, so...
I mean, I'm not aware of that. I'm not saying that isn't the case, but the applicant, the Fairfield Board of Education, the building committee is not aware of that. I would think that as part of this plan, and since it involves safety, not only in terms of traffic, but security, it's something that the record should indicate that the planning and zoning commission very seriously believes the public work department should place high priority on.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much. This also calls for the, well, can you please describe the, the parking changes on Mill Hill Terrace, the street parking, right?
Mill Hill Road?
And Mill Hill Road, both. Yeah. Just, just, if you summarize the existing conditions for on-street parking, Mill Hill Terrace and Mill Hill Road adjacent to the property, and what the, what the recommendations are for the traffic.
Sure. Along Mill Hill Terrace, along the frontage of the school, along this side, there isn't really any parking there, but parents have been observed stacking there to pull into the driveway to drop off in the morning or pick up in the afternoon. The whole idea of expanding the parent drop-off pickup was to bring those cars off the road and onto the school campus itself. Part of that concern was along Mill Hill Road, along, let's call it the front of the school, which today, parents do drop off and let the students walk down the steps to the front entrance to the building. We counted about 20 cars in general doing that, morning and afternoon, and then what we observed was, and by the way, those 20 cars that have been eliminated from drop-off along the frontage are brought into the parent drop-off and pick-up at the end, beginning of the day, at the end of the day, so we're accounting for that shifting of school traffic.
Keep, keep going.
Okay. Along Mill Hill Road, today, there is no park, the red line here is no parking today around the curve. We're obviously maintaining that. We, we want to keep that. Today, there is no parking, well, there's no, there are no signs really along the side of the road, let's call it the east side of Mill Hill Terrace. We're recommending that that becomes a no, no standing zone all the time. The difference between no standing and no parking is distinct difference. No parking means I can stop, drop off my child, and leave. No standing says you can't stop and do anything, you must drive. Now, in each case, that's a travel lane. Mill Hill Road is really a two-lane road, a center line, there's really no parking lane. There is somewhat of a parking area along the school frontage on the west side of the road, where we're recommending no standing between 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM to eliminate and hopefully control parents stopping and dropping off, or coming up at the end of the day, stopping and waiting for their child to come out of the school, up the steps into the car. The reason why it's a time period, stopping at 6:00 PM, is if there's a school evening event, Parents' Day or Parents' Night and so on, that they need someplace to park, because obviously there's more cars on a parent night, if you will, than a typical school day. A lot of discussions about that, and that was the, the basis of the reasoning for the no standing signs with a time restriction along the school frontage, and no standing with, you know, all the time, 24 hours across the street, if you will. The other part of the concern there and the elimination of the parent dropping off or making it desirable to drop off was parents would drop, come from either direction, from Route 1, for example, or from Mill Hill Terrace, drop off, make a U-turn and go the other direction, and it's not a simple U-turn, it's more what we call a K-turn, you back and forth in three movements. My opinion, unsafe condition, so police department discussions, we put up in the, on the plan, no U-turns to enforce that, even though there's a double yellow center line on Mill Hill Terrace and you're not supposed to cross it. A lot of discussion about that. So that's in place. We paid a lot of attention to Mill Hill Road as far as keeping the parent off of Mill Hill Road and onto the campus into the, the parent drop-off and pick-up area. Very, very important part of this plan itself. School buses, if I may, just remain, they stay in the front. The encircle itself has been improved. It accommodates all the school buses. We counted the buses, you know, big and small. We had as much as 11 buses, if you count the small ones, and that's accommodated in the plan itself. We talk about crosswalks, we talk about tying into existing sidewalks. We have, as mentioned a minute or two ago, the access from the parent drop-off into the building at controlled points, and obviously, in today's world, it's important to have control at a school as far as when you get in or out of a building itself. We took that into account. I think I've covered everything on the plan in general.
So with, with regard to the, the recommendations that you've just outlined with respect to no standing on both sides of Mill Hill Road over there, and the no U-turns and, and, you know, all that, are those recommendations that you've made, which are subject to our imposition as conditions of approval? Have you spoken to the police department about implementation of those recommendations? You know, where do we stand with that?
Yep. Our recommendations, we've met with the police department, they know about these recommendations. We've had these discussions. these recommendations. We've had these discussions. We will need to go to the police commission to formalize it. They've been part of this process.
They've been part of the process, too.
Yeah. No surprises here.
So, to my recollection, there was a substantial amount of pushback from parents about converting the parking which exists on Mill Hill Road, no, 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 Mill Hill Road in front of the school.
On the street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For, you know, drop off and pick up.
Drop off.
I mean, exactly that. I mean, I can understand the no U-turns for the reasons you described, but, you know, there are other areas where there's no parking or such, where it happens anyway. You know, I can't imagine we're going to have a police officer standing out there patrolling the, you know, the street.
No, but they do spend time out here.
What, yeah.
Not every day, obviously.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, it seems to me that it's a very important part of the plan in order for the recommendations that you've just described to be implemented in order for all of this to, to work smoothly and properly. Is that, is that right?
That's correct, and as I mentioned before, overall, safety is more important than a little bit of traffic congestion, meaning if you wait a long time to come out of the driveway at the end of, at the end of the school day, that's okay. So, that's what we did.
Yeah.
Let me also add that the principal's been a major contributor to this plan, and he is very, very committed to making it happen for the basis of safety of his kids. So, I mean, you know, this has not been done pulling it out of the sky. The principal, the police department, all the way up to the chief, have all been involved in this process.
Okay. Very good.
And it's all been vetted to the parents over the course of, I don't know how many years this committee has had over the last year, and it's all been very closely.
Right. And, and do we now collectively, Mr. Fallon, feel like the community and the building committee and the police department and the fire department, everybody's kind of coalesced around this plan as being the plan?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have one more graph to show. It's really a table. Just as part of the traffic study, we're obviously adding students, and what we did is we actually did actual traffic counts.
Students were likely...
I'm sorry. Actual traffic counts, the two days, different days. We know the number of students. We translate that into traffic or trips per student in order to account for the growth of the student population. And generally speaking, and I'll just, I'll finish with this chart. On the days we actually did traffic counts, we had three hundred and eighteen, three hundred and thirteen students present. Different day, three hundred and twenty students. We're bringing it up to a four hundred and forty-one full capacity, which will not happen, obviously, day one, but over a period of time as enrollment grows. Generally speaking, we're adding sixty-nine and fifty-one vehicle trips to the road system, and that's what we analyze in a future condition. So, the analysis before and after includes that, those estimates, and it's based on actual activity at this school.
Yeah, I'm looking at Table Five, which indicates a fairly substantial increase in the number of cars on a percentage basis on, on the roads. Can you just talk a little bit about why the Mill Hill Terrace, I think I know, but then why the Mill Hill Terrace at the access drive west increase, increases so substantially?
It's all, obviously, all the school traffic is on, not all of it, but most of the school traffic is on that driveway while going through the intersection itself on Mill Hill Terrace. So, the increase is fifty percent roughly, while the other intersections are about eleven or twelve percent. So, in a school project, this is a little bit unique, but it's a surge of traffic, and it also occurs in a fifteen-minute period. So, it's not over really a one-hour period. It's somewhat condensed, and that's why you'll see short, what I call, short-term traffic congestion at a school. And the percentages here are just, just for reference purposes. The analysis, analyses show that the intersections do work. They're all stop sign control, obviously. We don't make any recommendations to change the type of traffic control. We would never be recommending a traffic signal, but that's part of our analysis as we go through any, any traffic study. And in this case, as I mentioned at the beginning, a little bit of traffic congestion, a little bit of longer delay, protecting safety of students crossing the street or school buses, we'd rather have a longer delay. But the percentages are, yeah, they're higher than normal for this type of operation, if you will.
Is, is that partly because you're moving traffic from, you know, cars from, from one entrance, you know, to the other? They're going in and out, you know, in and out whereas they, of one, whereas they normally went in one and out the other?
In one and out the other, but we're also adding traffic to Mill Hill Terrace, whether they're using that driveway or not, they're going through the intersection. So, majority of the school traffic is going through that intersection, whether the main driveway or not.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
But as in any, any analysis, you know, years ago, we used to look at the percentages as a way of measuring increased delay. In this case, we don't do that anymore, but this is just showing you a comparison.
Mm-hmm. Very good. Commissioner Brown?
So, I'm just looking at Table Three. So, to do the apples-to-apples for the increase, you take the full enrollment number, not like what actually attended that day. So, the full enrollment would be four forty-one, and at present, the full enrollment is three forty-six. That's where the ninety-five
Yes.
new capacity comes from.
On those days, correct.
So, how do you, so that only translates, though, into sixty-nine trips. Is that because people take the bus, or?
School buses.
Okay.
More than one child in a car. It includes, includes staff arriving and leaving at the end of the day. So, it's a combination of multiple combinations, but what we do with school projects is we estimate the traffic per student. So, if we add, you know, ninety-five students, we apply that rate to the additional students, and that's how we come up with sixty-nine additional trips in the morning and fifty-one additional trips in the afternoon.
Are there statistics of how you come up with that? Because wouldn't you have more staff, like you just mentioned staff? Wouldn't there be more teachers and more, there's more classrooms, I assume, right?
It's, it's in the mix.
Pardon me?
We, we know what the traffic is going in, into the school in the morning and the afternoon, inbound, outbound. Some of that staff, if they come in during that one-hour period, or if the staff comes in earlier, it's not included in these numbers.
Okay.
But it includes staff, parents, and school buses.
So, you're talking during a certain time period?
Yeah, the peak hour that goes with the analysis.
What's the peak hour for this, for example?
It was eight fifteen to...
And that's based on statistics the schools provided you?
No, no. Actual traffic counts by our office.
Oh, okay.
We're out there from seven to nine. We identified the peak. We know the start of the, you know, the ringing bell in the morning, for example. We know what dismissal time is. We did actual counts. We picked, identified the highest volumes, and we base the analysis on the highest volumes.
So, you extrapolated from current?
Actual.
And just expanded that into what the future capacity is at the same percentage of?
Actual, full capacity of the school in the future.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Okay. Any, any other questions from Mr. Clonte? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lastly, obviously, construction phasing is always an important topic when you're talking about additions and improvements to an existing functioning elementary school. That's been a high priority for the committee, and we've been fortunate to have Amar Shamas of Gilbane, who probably has as much if not more experience in this type of situation to help us put together a construction phasing plan, which is also part of your material that we will briefly review.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amar Shamas. I'm with Gilbane Building Company. We are the construction managers for the project. Talking about phasing, as Dave Stein presented the project, and we worked very closely with the school administration and the architect and as well as the building committee in terms of developing these phasing plans along with the building officials as well. So, effectively, the project is going to be constructed in four phases, and our start will be this summer and will conclude around December of 2021, about an eighteen-month duration for the entire project. Obviously, it's an occupied renovation and expansions, so there is a lot of provisions that we've made developing those phasing plans to make sure that safety is a priority for the project, and obviously, we want to make sure that the project gets done on time and on budget as well. So, what we've developed for the project is basically Phase One, which, as I indicated earlier, will start this summer, and that will capture constructing the two additions that are being planned for the project. Basically, the classroom addition that's on the west side, as well as the music addition, which is Area B, that's on the east side. Our charge will be, the first we'll do is we'll demolish the existing older portables. They're actually located right underneath Area A, which is the classroom addition. That'll take place this summer in order to facilitate the start of the construction of the classroom wing. During the summer as well, we'll be making some provisions because those two additions are going to be, being fed from mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems from the existing buildings. So, during this particular period, we will be able to run some of the infrastructure out to those additions so we can capture those, when we complete those additions, come to the spring of next year, they'll be fully and ready to be occupied. And again, the reason we started with the additions in order to provide the swing space, so ultimately, we're going to be renovating the interior part of the building. So, we want to make sure there's enough swing space for the students and the teachers to actually relocate from the existing spaces so we can renovate during the school year in other areas. And obviously, this has been vetted out with the principal and the administration as far as the swing space aspect of the project. One area that we're going to be also working on this summer, as you can see, is that the actual turning, turning radius here for the buses is going to be actually moved further to the north. So, that's one area that we're going to establish this summer in order to facilitate the start of this addition here. And obviously, we will have associated laydown areas for materials and equipment in order to support those additions. Obviously, this summer is, upon mobilization, we're going to be doing a lot of sedimentation erosion controls, temporary fencing. That's going to be the very first thing we do to make sure the area is tight from sediment erosion control. There'll be temporary sedimentation basin that's been reviewed with the wetland, inland conservation department as well. So, those are also the provisions that we're going to be making early on, and those will change with, with each phase as we march around and renovate and construct the project. So, as we move to Phase Two, which is spring of 21, into the conclusion of the summer of 21, at that point in time, the area in green showed being completed in the spring, and then we'll be actually attacking the area D, which is the, the new administration space, as well as the gym addition, extension of the stage area. In addition to that, as we provide now the swing space in the additions, we're going to be attacking also Area C, which is part of the existing building. And we have reviewed those from egress standpoint within the interior of the building itself with the designers as well as the building official to make sure that we provide the adequate egress out of the existing building as we renovate. And this is very similar process that we implemented at Holland Hill, extremely similar. So, as we march through this particular phase, this will take us towards the end of the summer of next year of 21. And again, during that summer as well, we're going to be working on the site improvements of the project, building all the driveways and the curbing and the sidewalks, all that, because that's really the only time that we can actually attack those areas because they're being utilized during the school year. As we move on to Phase Three, again, areas that are completed, as is shown in green, and we're going to be concluding, this is actually during the summer period itself, we will be wrapping up the actual renovations and expansion of the front area and the main office. Obviously, wrapping the stage extension also during that summer. We're going to be working inside of the existing spaces, Area F, G, and H. Those are the areas that we need to hit up very hard in terms of getting those spaces renovated during the summer because that's the only time that we have actually to be able to renovate. Again, very similar process that we implemented at Holland Hill, and it worked very well for us. During all those three phases, and into Phase Four, we're maintaining the existing large portables. They're over on the west side in the back of the school. Those are also going to be utilized as a swing space, and those are going to be demoed at the end of the phase. The very last part that we do will be demoing the, those existing portables. During this phase, which is actually takes us into the fall of 21, we're going to be basically renovating the areas of the classrooms that you see in blue shaded areas. Each area will have its own supporting construction laydown area. In addition to that, we will be obviously wrapping up all of our site work. At the very end, we'll be looking at demolishing the existing portables, the last set of portables, and obviously finalize all of our site improvements in the back area.
So, thank you. So, during the phases of construction, where will the construction vehicles ingress and egress to the site? I'm particular, and, and, I mean, certainly, it's, it matters, well, you know, during the summer, but I'm thinking particularly when school is in session.
Right.
And how you're going to navigate both the operations of the school as well as your own personnel.
Yeah. Sure. So, basically, as we indicated with each construction area, we have two, two large areas of laydown and trade parking. So, basically, we have a gate that's going to be located at this location. That's going to be always locked. Our fencing is going to ring the entire construction area, and we'll have gates and scrim as well so to isolate the space. So, our trade contractors typically get in very early in the morning, and we typically conclude around three thirty. So, we do have onsite.
I'm sorry, did, did you say three thirty in the morning?
Yes. Three thirty in the afternoon. They come in at seven, seven o'clock in the morning to three thirty in the afternoon. And our onsite supervisions, project managers, project superintendent typically control those areas as far as ingress and egress out of the spaces. So, primarily, our trade contractors will be within the construction fenced-in area at this location, and if necessary, we might have some support in this area, but our main focus is really the back area, which is really the only large real estate that's available for us to be able to support the project.
What time does school start in the morning?
Typically, school, the bell rings about eight thirty or so, and a lot of the staff come in a little earlier, obviously, six, six thirty, seven o'clock. So, we've managed, we've been able to manage, a lot of it is communication with the school staff and administration to make sure that if there's any events, we avoid that. Obviously, going to be working weekends and sometimes second shift in order to hit certain areas as it relates to abatement and whatnot, and critical areas that we need to make in time for MEP infrastructure. But that's all part of the communication. Being an occupied building is very, you know...
Yeah. So, so you're not going to be occupying any of the parking areas with your trailer or, you know, equipment or anything like that?
No, we don't plan on utilizing any of the existing parking that currently exists for the school. We're going to be actually within the areas. That's why we're taking over the grassed area here. Our, our construction trailer will be right there, and we'll be able to monitor all the traffic. We might have a couple of small trailers for the trades, again, within the actual fenced-in area.
Right. And what, what is the security protocol or plan for the, for the construction area, doing, you know, check in, check out, sign in, sign out, that kind of thing?
Correct. So, basically, we have a protocol to Gilbane that all of our trade workers have, go through orientation to understand, because we have to develop specific site safety plan for the project, and all of our trade workers go through all of that orientation, make sure they understand the rules and regulations of the project, where to park, who to, who to communicate to, what are the contacts, and that's protocol standard for our projects that we have. And we share that with the administration as well. We share contact information. Our superintendent project managers, the folks.
Yeah.
Also, all the workers, I have badges. They're all vetted by the police department.
Yeah.
Okay. His onsite supervision also controls...
Talking to your mic a little bit.
Sorry. All, all the, his onsite supervision also controls egress and incoming trade traffic to make sure they're conforming to all the safety rules.
Yeah.
Speed limits, and, and whether or not your kid's involved.
So, thank you. So, so you have someone, like a guard, like somebody in, you know, manning the, the gate to let people in and out?
Shift supervisor.
Shift supervisor?
Yeah, that's basically, we have onsite superintendent. There's going to be a team of three individuals, a project manager, site superintendent. Actually, we, during the summer phase and some of the busy areas, we add another individual to the team to make sure, support the operation, make sure that the site, again, primarily site, site safety and making sure the construction area is separated from the occupied is priority to us, and we go through a rigorous process to make sure those areas are hard, there's hard barriers, and there's no, you know, especially being smaller kids, it's very important as far as safety for us.
Yeah. So, it's an elementary school.
Yes.
So, you said that all of the workers and employees are vetted by the police, the background checks?
Yes, there's background checks. That's the same process that we implemented at Holland Hill as well.
Excellent.
Background checks and like badges and...
There's actually, you just reminded me, there's a question I had about, in one of the notes, the fire department said that Holland Hill, Holland Hill Number Eight was a good dry run. Lesson learned included keeping access safe and separate phases of construction. What do they mean by that? What do they mean by that?
I think you're going to have to ask them.
Sorry?
I'm going to have to ask them because we kept it all safe at Holland Hill.
Okay. It just makes it seem like there were some hiccups and that, you know, there were lessons learned. And my question, you know, what lessons did we learn? You know, don't know.
Don't know.
Okay, all right. Very good. Does anyone else have any other questions? Commissioner Braun.
This might be more for the architect. Are we, the HVAC, is that, is that replacing existing HVAC throughout the whole entire facility? And is there air conditioning there now or is new air conditioning?
So, yeah, there's, we are air conditioning the entire school, okay? Currently, there are small areas that have some small form of air conditioning, but essentially, it's all brand-new air conditioning. The heating is coming from a boiler, and there's a loop that heats, essentially radiant heat that loops around the building. That exists, we're doing some improvements to that, but there's new air conditioning, new ventilation, and then rework of the heating system.
Do you anticipate it reducing the amount of energy they use?
No, we're adding air conditioning so we're consuming energy as we're cooling.
Is there a way of, I'm speaking a little bit conceptually, but is there a way of making sure that when you install, whatever type of system you're installing, it's the highest efficiency system?
Yes. Yeah, I can reassure you. So this, this project will meet the Connecticut High Performance Building Standard Guidelines, which is mandated by the state of Connecticut. So the efficiency ratings of the equipment that we are installing within any of the new spaces will meet that requirement, which is essentially 20% better than our building code.
And another sort of conceptual question, do we ever consider putting solar panels on?
There actually is solar panels that are located-
I thought I saw them in the aerial.
Yes, there are solar panels that are currently exist just over this wing that's located there. And those are remaining in place.
Can you put more in to help save on energy or anything, or no? That's not part of this project, adding to that?
That's not part of this project, correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much. Very, very thorough.
Not that they're going to run for the parking lot, but that's really it. Obviously, this is like the many school projects that you've worked so helpfully with the sign in the past. This is going to bring Mill Hill up to the standards that really are necessary in order to meet the needs of the students at the school over the next decade. It's going to allow us to ensure that Mill Hill and its students over the next decade are going to receive the benefit of facilities which on an architectural, environmental, and functional perspective are consistent with the educational specs of the Board of Ed. And we hope we've done a thorough job presenting to you tonight, and we hope you will favorably consider this project. It's been a long road, but it's one that I think the parents and community of Mill Hill are really looking forward to, and we thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Any other questions for Attorney Fallon? Okay, thank you very much. Any member of the public wish to be heard on this? Come on up.
Hi, Janine Alienello, RTM 10, and I just want to go on the record and say, there is a kids' care program that operates out of that school, and it's not run in conjunction with the school. So there's children arriving before 8:30 and staying after, and I don't know, when my daughter went there for half an hour in the morning, there's not a lot of collaboration between the administration and whoever runs that program. So I'd like somehow that to be addressed for those families that need to take their children there early, go to work, and stay there a little later, that they're just not left up to these other people working to care for them, that there should be some input from the administration. And then also, I'm not really sure, I know security is so important, I appreciate that, but there was, when we had those portables, they went ahead, the police went ahead and constructed six-feet-black security fencing. Many people were very upset about the height, the location. I don't know where that fencing was, I was told by the old Director of Operation, the old Board of Education Chair, that once those portals were gone, that black security fencing would go. So I don't know what kind of fencing is going there, so I'd like a consideration, maybe it not be six feet tall and black. And then also, I know they needed to spend more money on this project, and some of the landscaping was being reduced from the additional money. So if there's thoughtful consideration of the placement of that landscaping, certain kind of trees that would still be aesthetic yet safe for the children, I would just appreciate those considerations. And I'm very happy the school is finally getting renovated for safety and for air conditioning and all those good things, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else? Going once, going twice, sold. Okay, very good. And I will close the public comment portion and open for rebuttal. If you'd like to address the, there were a couple of questions there, particularly one relating to coordinating for programs that are not facilitated by the school. I think that's an important consideration, particularly with my questions about coordination. The fencing, we heard, I mean, there's got to be fencing, and I know there are standards for that. So just speak to the design of the fencing that will be in place after they're, after it's finished, and then, you know, how the landscaping plan changed from the budget constraints.
Well, let me start with the communication. They have the same programs at Holland Hill after school and before school. And those programs are negotiated between the principal, the Board of Ed, okay, and whoever's running the program. We don't have anything to do with that. But we can assure you that we don't have our people in there while their kids-
You're good.
Okay, while their kids involved. Okay, so we take care whether or not they're going to school there, okay, during the time or the kids' care program.
Well, maybe, maybe, maybe your phasing guy or your architect can speak to this a little bit better because, quite frankly, that's not a good answer, right? To say that, you know, that's not our, not our responsibility, that's-
Sure. So, so in terms of, in terms of the phasing, and Amar talked about it briefly, the site is, the site is managed during construction by the construction manager. Any entries, whether it's deliveries of materials, or if it is student or teacher population entering at the school, whether it's at the core hours or slightly before the core hours, will be managed in terms of that overall logistics, so-
Yeah, and I, and I don't, I don't think anybody doubts that. I mean, look, you guys have been doing this for a long time, and this isn't your first rodeo in the town of Fairfield. So, you know, we get that, right? But it's really about conflict of vehicles, congestion, egress and such, and just coordination, right?
Right. So ultimately, as I indicated earlier, the traffic for deliveries will be heavily coordinated and making sure that all the construction vehicles are within the fenced-in area. Again, once they land and the areas are fenced in and the vehicles inside the fenced-in area, beyond that, it's really foot traffic for the trade workers, that particular area that they're working on. So outside of the summer months is really where it gets, the coordination is critical for us, to making sure that the trade contractors, if they have any question, any specific area they need to get into, that's why we have our site supervision there, to make sure they escort them to any specific area they want to go see or work at. So effectively, and as indicated earlier, there is hard barriers that we install. We install temporary partitions in the corridors.
Yeah, totally.
So, so those are areas are very well managed and signed, obviously.
Excellent. What, what I want to hear is that somebody from your team is going to liaise with the Board of Education and the administration to understand what outside-of-school programs take place at the school, outside of school hours, and that you are going to coordinate with those programs to make sure that there is a good flow.
Yeah, that's exactly what we've done in the past.
Okay, that's not what you said to me when you took the mic.
No.
Please.
Anyway.
The programs that the speaker referred to are not unique to-
Sure.
Have virtually every school.
And we dealt with that at Riverfield, we dealt with it at Holland Hill, and we deal with it exactly as you said, by making sure we're aware of what's going on and coordinating that into our basic security.
All right, thank you. All right.
And as far as the fencing goes-
Yeah, just, you're going to need to talk in the mic.
It's four-foot. Fencing is four-foot.
And as shown on the plans.
Yeah, so you need to pull the mic up, please. And I know you don't believe, when was the last time you watched one of the videos?
All the time.
So you have to understand how, what a hassle that is.
Well, the fencing is shown on the plans, it's at four feet, and the landscaping plan that we have prepared, which we think is a good plan, is part of your record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Braun.
The forty-foot oak tree, that's near the turnaround, that's what the tree warden wanted?
Yes, Aristotle.
Yay!
Excellent, excellent, thank you. All right. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, very good. I'll close the public hearing on this item. Thank you. The next item is zoning regulation amendment, application of Primrose Development LLC to amend Section 10.18 of the zoning regulations in the proposed transit-oriented Merritt Parkway District. Attorney Rizzio.
I'm not saying anything until I get the mic. Chairman, members of the-
You know, I got sensitized again to it when I was traveling the end of January and early February, and I, again, I had to watch another tape, and I was like pulling my hair out because I couldn't hear a damn thing. Thank you.
My wife's usually pretty happy when she doesn't have to hear this, so.
Oh.
Promise to stay close and not wander. Chairman, members of the commission, if you're ready, I'm ready. My name is Raymond Rizzio, and I represent Primrose Development LLC. Let me give you a little understanding of how we got here, why we think this is a great idea, why we think it's totally appropriate given today's day and age, and, and we think that it's consistent with your plan of conservation and development, and how this commission, we believe, has done a great job of addressing unique sites where higher density, we believe, is warranted from an economic impact standpoint, from a traffic standpoint, from a transit-oriented standpoint. So I represent Primrose Development, it's Principal John Gedd. John Gedd's a very prominent developer, has not done as much in Fairfield, but is responsible for the total development along the Shelton waterfront. He has helped to transform the Husutonic River there and also, that was Husutonic River, he's also been huge in transforming the downtown of Shelton. He's also been, built the first age-restricted community in Trumbull, and he's always been ahead of his time. So they were looking at this property at 5545 Park Avenue, which is a perfect property. I'll try not to be site-specific, but I'll, I'm just trying to explain how we got here. It's a very long, 600, over 600 feet long by 175 feet wide. It is the only property, residential property on Park Avenue south of the Merritt Parkway before you get to Jefferson Street. So it's a very unique parcel, it sits well below grade, it's across the street. Across the street is the largest medical office building in the area, it's 225,000 square feet. It is the, Bridgeport Hospital has made it their outpatient facility, the Smilow Cancer Center operates out of there, and it's a fantastic project next to it. And surrounding the property to the south is owned by the Diocese of Bridgeport and Notre Dame High School, and down toward the corner is the Sacred Heart Business School. That's it. Across the street also, just barely on the other side of it, is Bridgeport. So this is one of the most unique pieces of parcels of property, and why we think it's good for a high, high-density development is its access to the Parkway, it's the requirement that people will not have to travel through the Fairfield roads. Frankly, there's no, it's probably, it's right now, it's zoned R3. It may be, I would say, probably one of the top five worst parcels of property to be zoned single-family residence. It's at a light on the Parkway, surrounding two of the most major employers in the area. Why transit-oriented? So I've handed out some maps, and I'll take you through, I've given you excerpts from your plan of conservation and development, and why we picked transit-oriented Merritt Parkway District. I talked to my client, he's been through a lot of the process already, he's had a footprint approved by the resident, by the Wetlands Commission, he has obtained WPCA approval for unlimited amount of sewage, because when we were going through the WPCA with a different type of high-density project before I suggested that we'd come here, the Wetlands Commission said, would you please, rather than go through an easement and bring your sewers to our Jefferson Street pump station, which is deficient, would you look into going to Bridgeport? We went to Bridgeport, Bridgeport, who has unlimited capacity, has approved this property tie into the Bridgeport sewage system. And the property sits at a light right at the entrance into the highway. So when you think about transit-oriented development, with your, with your, in cooperation with this commission, we wrote a downtown transit-oriented development district. But when you think about transit, anybody who commutes or works out of town, in the town of Fairfield, goes one of three ways. You go on I-95, you go on train, or you go on the Merritt Parkway. Many people drive, love to live in Fairfield and work in Shelton, huge corporate office parks in Shelton, corporate office parks in Milford. They go down to Norwalk, they go to all the office parks in Stamford. If you go on the West Side Highway, if you need to live on, if you're going to the West Side of New York to work and you drive, you go down the Merritt Parkway. The Merritt Parkway from 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM is pretty well crowded. It is our, it is one of our major transit thoroughfares. And then starting again at 3:30 at night till 7:00 o'clock at night. So living close to the Parkway, not having to have people traverse through town is an amenity. If you have to spend 15 minutes to get to the Parkway because you want to live in an apartment or you want to live in Fairfield, and you want to live in Fairfield, but you live near the train station, but you don't want to take the train, in fact, not to be emotional with what's going on today in the world, I've got a number of clients who commute to New York by the train who've all started to drive. They don't want to be on a congested train around people.
Right, I mean you-
The factors bear it out, and I want to just explain that. In your own plan of conservation and development, over 71% of the people, if you look to the page, I'll take you through a little bit about the workplace and what you folks have found in the plan of conservation and development. If you look at means of transportation to work, the predominant role of transportation, mode of transportation to work was the private vehicle. Over 76% of Fairfield's workforce either drove alone to work or shared a ride with someone else. The majority of those commuting via private vehicle, 71.8% drove alone. Public transit modes captured 11% of the town's work-related trips. So what I'm just saying is we're going to address, what I'm trying to do with this regulation, address the reality of it. Fairfield, as much as we try to push people to the train, and as much as we're taking people off the roads, is still a commuter town with vehicular traffic, vehicular commuters basically taking up three, being three-quarters of the population in town. So we thought that this project was suitable for high residential, high, high-density residential. We thought to come to the town with a regulation that, in similar situations, this board has been very progressive. Unco Road, where the town had, where you guys had a ton of input in the reg, you had a ton of input in the, in the development, it wasn't a project that was jammed down your throat. You were allowed, you were allowed to participate in the architecture, participate in the landscaping, participate in the makeup of the building, and it was only because you, rather than having somebody jam an A30G down your throat, you had the ability to have a text amendment to participate in the development of that project, which I think is going to be outstanding. Trademark, the ability to have a transit-oriented district regulation where you're allowed to create it with your mixed uses. I know you have another project coming before you now, I'm not sure, I don't think you've made a decision on another regulation with regard to high density in the appropriate areas. areas. So we have a situation where, I told my client, I said, "Look, before we go into a situation where we just get what we want, let's go to the town and see if we can do something on a cooperative basis." And I looked at your POCD, there's plenty of ammunition in here, I can take you through it, that basically tells you that there's very busy roads, Park Avenue is one of the roads that has over ten thousand cars per day on it, vehicular trips per day. That, if you go to the second page, we talk about public transportation. The Greater Bridgeport Transit District runs its bus right up and down the street and Park Avenue all day. You run people down to the city of Bridgeport.
Where's the nearest, where's the nearest bus stop?
What's that? Nearest bus stop currently, I believe, is on the corner of Jefferson Street and Park Avenue.
How far away is that, from the parcel?
Hmm, couple hundred feet, five hundred feet, I'd say, maybe? And I would, what's that? It's, well, put it this way, it's one parcel away, it just happens to be a large parcel. So it's maybe, maybe it's, it's the field and then the business school. So I can't give you the approximate district, but it's certainly within walking distance, yes.
But that stop is not for every run, it's only some runs during the day, right?
Right, well, you can also talk to the Greater Bridgeport Transit District about increasing where the pickups are, where the things are, we've had that in multiple...
All right, so there's a, there's a bus stop within walking distance from the parcel?
Correct, yes. Then we talk about projected income, I mean, projected impact on the roads from vehicular transit in the last page. But like I said, most importantly, we talk about that means of transportation from people, of people in Fairfield, and that is, they use the Parkway. So we came up with this, with an idea. I think it's a good idea, I think it's a good project, I think it makes sense to come in with a, hold on a second, with a proposed text amendment. Let me take you through the proposed text amendment, I think I can give you the reasoning behind it, and I think this makes a lot of sense. So basically, as you can see, I've given you the black line version, the black line version's basically the introductory, it says the purpose of this transit-oriented Merritt Parkway District is within a design residence district. So keep in mind, even if you adopt this regulation, you still have total control, you haven't given up anything, because we have to come back to you for a change of zone, and a special permit application. By getting the change of zone, you have total control, because you have complete discretion of whether you believe this meets with your plan of conservation and development. So we're not trying to jam anything down your throat. So we want to enable development of a neighborhood for vehicular commuters on properties adjacent or budding the Merritt Parkway on a scale or design appropriate to its existing neighborhood. Existing neighborhood here is you've got a business school, you've got a two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-square-foot medical center with a five-hundred-car parking garage across the street, you have Notre Dame High School, and its surrounding fields, and then the Merritt Parkway directly next door. So the permitted uses, which I...
What's internally zoned, currently zoned as?
It's currently zoned R3. And if we, we'll go to the next, which gives you the requirements to meet this amendment. One of the things, we kept it consistent with the transit-oriented downtown district, is that the residences are going to be only for one or two-bedroom units. You cannot have a three-bedroom unit, you cannot be taxing this, building new schools, taxing the public school system. This is going to be an attractive area, and it's going to be all one- and two-bedroom units. If you go to ten point eighteen point three, there's the proposed regulation, proposed requirements of where the location is. So properties qualifying for this transit-oriented Merritt Parkway District consist of a parcel, qualifying parcels, in R3 zones. So you have to be in an R3 zone, you have to have a minimal lot of area of at least two acres. You, at the time of adoption of this section, so we don't end up with mergers and crazy things, but I'm going to take you down the Parkway, so that I think you're comfortable, and show a but, the south side of the Merritt Parkway. Why do we pick the south side of the Merritt Parkway? First of all, I think you're going to have some applications coming in for you from the north side of the Parkway, but from the south side of the Parkway, first of all, there's availability of sewage, because capacity is much greater. Secondly, you have a more of a developed area, certainly on the Park Avenue side, on the Jefferson Street side, you have condominiums, you have Notre Dame High School, you have the GE property. If you go down to Black Rock Turnpike, you end up, we believe that the south side is certainly more controllable, controlled, and the north side of the Merritt Parkway is always thought to be more rural. So that's the thinking behind that limitation.
So how many parcels, aside from this one, are in an R3 zone with at least two acres within a hundred and fifty feet of an entrance or exit ramp to the Merritt?
Funny that you should ask, and I didn't think you would ask that question. So I happened to prepare, take you down the Merritt Parkway, and if you look, we've given you large maps.
This one here?
Yeah. Do you want me to take you through the rest of the reg, or do you want to go through this?
Frankly, it's a question to which the answer is a single-digit, likely.
Yes.
I just want to know the answer to the question.
Yes, but I want to show you so that you understand that I don't want, I don't ever want the commission for me to represent something and then be hit in the side of the head with something that they didn't anticipate.
It's a very, and I'm not, trying not to be at all argumentative, it's a very defined criteria for those parcels that would qualify under the regulation.
Correct.
You've identified the applicant is owning one, I'm curious to understand how many other parcels would meet that designation?
Currently, there are a couple of parcels, but they happen to be owned by the state of Connecticut, that abut, that live, that are on the south side, that abut. So what I've done is, I've given you a map that takes you down to, we have three exits on the Merritt, correct?
Is it this one?
Yes. So the first one is the parcel that we're talking about.
Yeah.
As you can see, it's over two acres, it abuts the south side of the Merritt Parkway, it's surrounded by property owned by the Roman Catholic Thyssen, it's across the street from...
I see that.
You got the whole thing. The next parcel.
The next one is where?
Let's go down to Route fifty-nine. Remember, you have to be on the south side, and you have to abut. So yeah, the GE property does not abut, is not within a hundred and fifty feet. There's a track that's owned by the state of Connecticut, on the other side is the commuter lot, owned by the state of Connecticut.
So are you talking about the parcel that's in between Jefferson Street and the Merritt?
Correct.
Ordered on by fifty-nine and Weeping Willow?
Correct.
Right there?
No. Yeah, that is Weeping Willow, that's correct.
There's a, there's another parcel there, but, you know...
Yeah, but they're not within a hundred and fifty feet...
Right.
...of the entrance. Next.
And the state of Connecticut, that's where they've just recently renovated that, that whole site as another parking, commuter parking lot?
Correct. The next, you would go down to Black Rock Turnpike, you have the state of Connecticut on the south side, you have the, once again, they own the property on the south side to, on the, well, let's consider, and it's the south side of the Merritt, it's the north, it's, would be the east side of Black Rock Turnpike, those properties are owned by the state of Connecticut, and same thing, as you get off on the west side, the state of Connecticut has a staging area there.
Right, and that's where they have all the construction vehicles and, I think, probably sand salt, whatever, stuff like that, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So in our mind, this property, is it the sole property?
I have a question.
I think it's the most developable unless someone could purchase those properties from the state of Connecticut.
Right, so Commissioner Corcoran has a question.
Yeah, so why are you not including the north side of the Parkway?
We believe, first of all, the north side's more rural, the north side starts to impact neighborhoods. So for example, there's two streets on the north side of the Merritt on Park Avenue. You would then start impinging, you would have high-density residential districts impinging on the residential homes.
But is there a two-acre site there?
You could, there, I don't know if it's two acres, there's a larger site just on the other side of the Parkway, but it also backs up to residences behind it, single-family residences behind it. If you go on the north side of, on the north side of the Merritt, on fifty-nine, on fifty-eight, fifty-nine, you have, backing all up to single-family residences running up to east and much more rural. On the north side of Black Rock Turnpike, you have some large parcels there. I think the large parcels are something that you want to control, you're going to probably see them in front of you shortly in another manner, and then you have the Hi-Ho Hotel. But keep in mind, we're trying to get property that abuts the Merritt. And why do we take a property that abuts the Merritt? Because it provides an automatic insulation for the high-density from the single-family residences. So I think, that's why we think this makes a ton of sense in this location. So they have to be within a hundred and fifty, because there's no sense in me telling you it's transit-oriented and putting something in the middle of a residential district. The whole key is, somebody, if they can save fifteen minutes, if they work for the hospital, they work for Sacred Heart, they commute to Norwalk, they commute to Shelton, they commute to the West Side of New York, they want to live in an apartment, they don't want to live in a big house anymore, but guess what? They don't have to take ten or fifteen minutes. It's at a light, literally from here, light turns green, you go across the road, you're on the Merritt Parkway going north. The infrastructure, the beauty of this, the infrastructure was built for this when they did the hospital. The hospital was all private money to put that roundabout together, I don't, remember what the old roundabout, was the old half-about? I mean, it was, it was, it was like, you know, it was, it was, you took your life into your hands getting across there. Now, the roundabout works perfectly, there's no traffic issues, there's no holdups, this site works perfectly because the infrastructure was built to accommodate, which is, remember, there's literally a five-hundred-car parking garage across the street, Sacred Heart's capacity, and this is, this is going to be right-controlled at the light. The problem with Sacred Heart is they have a lot of these driveways and everything coming out onto Park Avenue, but things aren't controlled by the light, this will be controlled by a light. So people can, if you live there, you're going to be able to walk to your doctor if you wanted to, you're going to be able to walk and take advantage of all the things at Sacred Heart. You're a mile, maybe a mile and a half from the Trumbull Mall, you are, you can get to Black Rock Turnpike. So this is an excellent spot for a commuter to live that wants to live in an apartment, yet what doesn't it do? It doesn't impact the single-family feel of that portion, that area of Fairfield. So that's why we picked this area.
Excuse me, can I ask a question about topography again?
So you said there's four parcels that meet this criteria, but the three others are owned by the state? I'm just trying to figure out which ones they are.
There are basically three, three or four parcels owned by the state in this property up on Park Avenue.
So the next one is the Weeping Willow-Jefferson-Sport Hill Road one? It's like a trapezoid shape, right there?
Let me, uh...
Yeah, Weeping Willow-Jefferson...
Do I venture and leave the microphone? I'm afraid to leave the microphone.
You've got copies of them right there, right?
I'm just trying to understand which four parcels meet your criteria.
So it's marked the state of Connecticut, those parcels exceed two acres...
Okay.
...in our, about the Merritt Parkway.
Well, one does, but the one on the other side of Sport Hill Road looks like it's really skinny, that doesn't look like it does.
Yeah, it goes on for a long way.
So that would meet the criteria?
Huh?
That's an odd shape, okay. So both sides of Sport Hill Road, and then going down to Black Rock Turnpike, it looks like there's two or three state parcels, those all meet the criteria?
They're both, in my understanding, excess of two acres.
The two...
More importantly, those are the only eligible parcels that abut the Parkway that are large parcels.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, continuing with the regulation, and I hope I'm trying to explain there was logic to why we're before you, this is just not...
I understand, my, my, the question was very straightforward, just how many parcels meet the criteria?
Right, I got you.
Please continue.
Okay.
I didn't mean to throw you off the track here.
One of the things we looked, looked at was, what is, in those special circumstances, what is the density that this commission has been comfortable with? And we went back to the maximum allowable residential dwelling density shall be fifteen bedrooms per acre, and the maximum residential unit count shall be no more than ninety. Application to determine if it qualifies as a transit-oriented district, same thing with the affordability plan. One of the things that we thought was important here, as I know that's been a lot of discussion, is that we have a ten percent requirement of affordable housing, and when we do density, I believe, of more than ten units. In this instance, we, in a transit-oriented Merritt Parkway District, you feel free to call it whatever district you like, I tried to just explain the logic why it was there, that we thought it was important that the town gets something, an additional benefit out of this, and that the, there would have to be fifteen percent of the dwelling units would have to be affordable. And those are the changes from what you're familiar with, except for one last thing, and this I learned the hard way about. No building or structure shall exceed forty feet of height in a TODD, and no building or structure shall exceed fifty feet of height in a TOMPD. The reason for that is experience, having had to been before you before in this similar district with the properties that are topographically challenged, that when the, when the surveyors go out to measure and do average grade in calculating height, when you have a property like this that goes down, when you had a similar property downtown on Uncle Road that went up, when you measured the average grade, I remember having to be back before you a few months ago for a waiver, and then a district to have the height moved up, not because the building was any taller, but because the, there was an issue with the average grade in moving around walls and retaining walls as you're in the process of building a project. So that's our regulation, and we think that this really works out well. I've tried to give you, I think Chris might have handed you an overview from satellite view, which shows just how special this piece is. You have, the closest house is on Weeping, at the end of Weeping Willow cul-de-sac. The house has at least a hundred feet of, well, tree, diocese land, that's going to remain undisturbed because there's part of it that was wetlands. So what happened originally, when we were, when a different, higher-density project was proposed on the same, on a similar footprint, the applicant had obtained an easement from the diocese to connect to the Weeping Willow property. In doing that, a lot of the trees and foliage and shrubbery would have had to have been disturbed. On top of that, the town has an issue with regard to the estimates for replacing the pump station at the Jefferson Street station have come in twice of what they anticipated, and I don't think they could afford it, so Wetlands asked us to please reconsider and not use the easement and go to Bridgeport. So we've worked through the town, we've been through WPCA, we've been through Wetlands, we have been through a compliance meeting already, and that effect, in effect, brings us here with trying to get a regulation approved that we think makes a lot of sense. From an economic perspective, this property like this hypothetically pays about six or seven thousand dollars a year in taxes. If a project of up to ninety units was approved, the taxes generated without the benefit of, I believe, any children, as you've heard in one- and two-bedroom condos, could equate to three-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred thousand dollars a year in taxes. And no impact on the infrastructure of the town, no impact on the traffic patterns of any residents, no impact on any adjoining neighborhoods.
And that's not, I think you're getting a little...
In serving its purpose...
You're not going to limit this, the residents from, you know, you're not going to require that the residents here not traverse, you know, Black Rock Park Avenue and Black Rock, I mean, you know, you don't know where they're going to...
I don't, but I can tell you, the reason, why would you want to live here? You'd want to live here if you used the Merritt Parkway, you'd want to live here if you worked at the hospital, you'd want to live here if you were a graduate student or a professor at Sacred Heart.
No, I agree, I agree. I just, I think that making the, the representation no impact to, you know, local roads, it's like, it's a little bit extreme.
Well, let me say, we've had, the traffic expert has looked at it, and there'll be no change of level of service at all, so that I can say comfortably.
That's, that's a good data point.
Thank you.
So what was the, the project that you, so you went to Bridgeport to inquire about, you know, using their sewage system?
So originally what happened, why we're here, originally there was, there was the, there was the idea of doing a high-density project on this site because they thought it was appropriate. Our client's been very successful at it, he does a great job with it, and there were two means, two ways to go with it. Originally, the idea was to come in with an eight-thirty-G application. I said to my client, I said, "Look, there may be ways to lessen the density, give the town affordable housing, and something that will work well for everybody in coming in and trying to go with the text amendment." I believe the text amendment gives the...
Yeah, so let's take a step back, though, because it's very interesting to me to think that, you know, reliance on, not reliance, but the cooperation, if you will, with, with Bridgeport. I don't know, I've been doing this for a while now, and I don't know the last time I heard of a project on, you know, in Fairfield that taps into the Bridgeport infrastructure. So what was the, what was the nature of that, that project that you got approval for from Bridgeport? Was it, that was an eight-thirty-G proposal?
Correct.
And how many units was that?
It wasn't an eight-thirty-G proposal.
No, no, I understand.
There was no proposal.
There was, there was no application, but it was, if we were to... There was, there was no application, but it was, if we were to, and it would look like, what do you think?
Correct.
How many units were we talking about?
That was for a hundred.
A hundred? All right.
And, and there could be more.
Yeah, I mean, it's, listen, two acres, and I don't know what the, I haven't studied, I don't know what the topography is, and, you know, the limitations and such, but if you've got sewage capacity, it's a big, that's a big, you know, thing.
And the light, and, and the Wetlands approval, the footprints basically prove the question because how high? Why do I think this is important? Why do I think, as a resident of the town, why I think this is also an important, important aspect that... I've seen the work this commission's done in treating architecture. I've seen the work this commission's done in looking at landscape. I've seen the work this commission's done in providing for bike and all sorts of amenities that are, that they can require out of a, out of an applicant, in, in improving, in improving an application. So to me, if I were a commissioner, I'd rather, and I'm going to get density, I'd rather control the density, control how it's going to look, control how it's going to operate, control what it's going to look like versus having no control. And we thought that you'd end up with a reduction in density, you'd have an increase in affordable housing given to the town over which would be normally permitted, and you would have input and control over a project. You'll have it through a change of zone, and you'll have it through a special permit process. The other way is the applicant comes in with what they want, and they have wetlands, they have sewer, and they have a lot...
The threat's not lost on us.
Yeah. And I'm not, that, I'm just explaining why I talked my client into coming this way.
Understood. So how do you respond to those that would argue this is spot zoning? Because there's only one single privately owned parcel that meets the requirements under the...
The state sells property? There's property available? There's, it can be purchased, there's not, there's, there's more than two acres in multiple locations that would be, could be purchased. I think the key was trying also to, I don't want to say dip the toe in the water, and give a, give the commission reasonable guidelines which they could foresee and see how these things worked in an area where they were going to get density anyway, but they had the ability to control it before they expanded it. I truly believe, and I think, and if you've lived in this town, and you've lived in this area, and you drive on the Merritt Parkway, that, that, and you look at your own statistics that seventy-five percent of our commuters drive.
Yeah.
That this, a transit oriented project at this site is very legitimate.
Understood. So outreach, regulation amendment like this, do you meet with property owners on Weeping Willow? Have they given you any...
No, I met with, I met with the owners of the hospital property, we've met with the diocese.
Okay.
We have to, we have to get a change of zone, so we have to notify, and the change of zone is a lot different, you know, your, your discretion there is unlimited. So we have to get a change of zone, we did not, it has to be a design residence district. So at that point, if this regulation is passed, we need to send out the required letters, we need to go in for a change of zone to a designed residence district, and then come back to you, before you, for a special permit, and we'll do all the outreach we need if that happens.
I mean, you know, if you didn't think you qualified for the designed residence district, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be here, which is why I'm asking about, you know, other, other outreach. What about the Merritt Parkway conservan, conservatory, conservancy, conservancy?
I don't, I, we haven't had to do it. I did all the zoning across the street, it wasn't a requirement.
No, not, I, I, I'm not talking about requirements. It's not a requirement that you go talk to this family that lives on Weeping Willow Lane on the corner, that's going to be within probably, what, a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet of the, of the property line?
A hundred and fifty feet of the property line, and then a wetland of probably another fifty feet.
Yeah. My point is, it's not required.
Correct.
But likely a good thing.
Well, I mean, if the commission would like us to do that, I have no problem doing that. My, my gut instinct was to figure out that we had a reg to work with. Once we had a reg to work with, we would come back to you with a special permit and a change of zone, and at that point, we would reach out to everyone who had to be, who was, was within a notification distance, have the meetings. As you know, Chairman, I, I don't have a problem speaking to neighbors. I reach out all the time.
No, I, I do, and, and that's why it was, it was merely a, you know, a question to probe whether or not there'd been outreach to adjoining neighbors and other folks who would have an interest in understanding the proposal.
Mm-hmm.
And likely wanting an opportunity to participate in that, or to express themselves here.
I have no problem doing it, Chairman. I, if the commission would like me to continue this matter, to reach out to the representative in the district, to reach out to neighboring property owners, I, I have no problem doing it, because it's going to happen anyway, and it's going to happen at a time when this commission has its ultimate discretion.
Yeah, understood.
If, if that's what, if that's what the commission would like me to do, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have tonight.
Okay. Yep, Commissioner Corcoran, then Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Corcoran, then you.
We have a letter from MetroCog.
Mm-hmm.
I received, I think, yesterday or the day before, and it describes the project in great detail, and then concludes with a single sentence saying that it's not regionally significant.
Right.
Can you interpret that?
Yeah, I interpret it as they typically, and Mr. Went can tell you, when they, when they say not regionally significant means it's not going to have a negative impact.
No, that's not it, no.
That's what I've heard. If it's not re...
I'm sorry, you're having trouble hearing me?
That's the way I've interpreted it in the past, that when they don't comment negative, typically they...
I was Fairfield's representative on the MetroCog when it was under a different name. In order for there to be a recommendation, it has to be of significance to the region. It's simply concluding that it's not of significance to the reason, and...
Right.
...region, and therefore they're not expressing an opinion.
Correct.
So that's not saying it won't be negative, it won't be positive, it's saying this is not of consequence to the region, and therefore you do what you want to do.
Typically, I will tell you in my thirty years of experience, when I've, when I've, when they have commented, it's typically to say that it'll have a negative impact on the region, but that's my experience.
Fair.
Limited for different areas.
Fair. When I was doing it, we would take pains to express that, you know, the positives, and in that way actually express support for a proposal, and not just, this won't be significant.
Yeah.
Yeah, that answers that. Commissioner Brown?
So basically, if the state of Connecticut was to sell any of those other properties, or even, I suppose they could develop it, you're, this is sort of opening the door for similar developments up and down the Merritt, like, one is right on Nonna Pogue.
Well, here, there's, 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 there's a, let me explain that.
Yeah.
Yes and no. If the, if the state, first of all, it would have to be zoned R3. I'm not exactly sure what those properties are.
Oh, okay.
Secondly, it'd have to get a change of zone from you to get a designed residence district, and then it'd have to come before you with a special permit application. So I don't, I don't, there, there was, there's a lot, a lot of hurdles to get to you, of which I don't envision the state selling commuter parking lot.
May I?
Sure, Commissioner Nunez.
When I was first reading this, the thought I have with overlays is we've always been keeping them towards the train stations, because we wanted to encourage public transit, and that's, the density down there makes sense. My experience, I've not seen overlays based on major highways. And that doesn't mean they don't exist, that's just not my experience. You've kept it tailored to specific areas. This, the south part especially catches my attention, but while we don't set precedent, we like to be consistent at the same time. Are we going to have overlays for every exit on the Merritt, north and south, or south and north, because...
From my personal...
Hi Lo, I mean, Hi Ho, and then that medical building that hasn't been built, then we looking at ninety-five.
From my personal experience in dealing with the commission, the commission has always been concerned of knowing the, the consequences of an overlay. What it'll apply to, where it will go, so that there is no surprises. In this instance, I tried to leave it, make it so that there would be no surprises, and that if somebody wished to expand an overlay to another part, when they had consensus, when they had, the timing was correct, and their, and the project was appropriate, I would think they would be able to come in and expand an overlay. However, when you have properties that are so unique, this property's clearly should not be R3, I mean, it's the last place you'd expect a, a single family house to be.
Well, that's, but that's also true.
Then the question is, what do you do as an appropriate zone? Do you just zone a commercial? It got turned by, down, down by this commission, I think, zoned commercially years ago. There was going to be a medical office building there.
When, when was that?
Oh, ten years ago.
Yeah, I mean, probably ten, twenty years ago.
And, and the time has passed on that because Bridgeport Hospital went across and built across the street.
Yeah. So and the new development kind of makes it look like, you know, it's not, it shouldn't have been, it may not be appropriate for a residential, but twenty years ago, thirty years ago, it was appropriate probably at that point.
And especially now with what's got, the, the, the infrastructure that's been put up there is not that for a single family residence.
Have you come across overlays that are used for major highways?
I would envision...
Is it anywhere else in the state or country?
I would envision, well, yeah, I mean, you could go to Shelton where they have PDDs, which are overlay zones, and they have forty of them.
Near the Merritt? That's what he's asking.
But near highways?
Oh, sure, along Bridgeport Avenue, right next to the exit of Bridgeport Avenue, where they've got, where people put in a PDD, where that's within a certain number of feet, or a budding, a budding Route Eight. In Trumbull, they did overlays along Lindeman Drive for access Reservoir Avenue, that whole old corporate park. You can see them along the Merritt Parkway now, the, there's probably six hundred units going up in that, in that old corporate park that abuts, that abuts the Merritt Parkway. I've done overlays, number of overlays abutting the parkways, where they use that as a backing way of putting some limitations on things. One of the nice things about the Parkway is it acts, it really does act as a true buffer. And the reason we picked the southern end, obviously this piece is here, but to restrict it to the southern end, because the southern end, certainly along Park Avenue, has a very different makeup.
Yes.
As you, as you move away from the Parkway than the, than the, than the northern end does.
No, but I mean, I'm looking at, I mean, exit forty-six, the Hi Ho area, I mean, I think the overlay would be appropriate for there, just as much as it would be in the area you're discussing.
Correct. I, 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 if the commission thought that that would be a good idea for this zone, I would have no objection, I, I am not, I, I am not...
No, I understand. But why, also, for the, initially you say to qualify it has to be an R3, and then the purpose is in the designed resident district, is that just to give us some...
Gives you...
Comfort and that we, that you have to come, or you or somebody would have to come back twice, so to speak?
Well, number one...
Or not twice, but at least give us...
Number one, you don't pass a reg and have me then wave it in front of you and say, "I meet all the guidelines you got to approve it because it's a special permit, but we approve it." You have your greatest amount of discretion in a designed residence district. It's what allowed you folks to, by, for example, the Jewish Home Parcel on Thorpe Street. This commission was originally going to make it a, I mean, it morphed into something else, but the commission gave the designed residence district overlay down there, and that's what allowed the project to go forward. But without that designed residence district overlay, nothing could happen.
Was it, was it your, the current owner, your, your client, who applied for the commercial zone change years ago?
Different owner. No, no, well, same, this, this family's been in the Boba Wick family for property, probably for fifty years. It was a different developer that made the application for the, for the, it was going to be a surgical center. And then what happened, Bridgeport Hospital got sold on the, on the, on the location.
Oh, I remember that, yeah. Yeah, yeah, okay, all right.
They got sold on the location, and then went ahead and built a massive surgical center across the street.
Mr. Bravman?
Your presentation seems to anticipate that, you know, the transit, transit oriented regulations so far are oriented toward mass transit, right? Rail, and also to a less extent pedestrian and bicycle. There, there's the downtown aspect of it, which would be sort of eliminated by the proposed regulation change.
No.
Well, no, 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 you're striking out the word downtown, and you would, you would have, you would still have the downtown, transit oriented downtown district, but that's, you know, oriented toward rail. And then you're adding a new district, transit oriented, that, you know, you have some aspects of it in your narrative that relate to bus service, for example. But I guess I'm wondering, what is the, what are the ways in which the proposed new district would take advantage of, you know, bus service, opportunities for pedestrian, travel, even bicycle, as opposed to just commuter traffic on the Merritt Parkway?
You can walk to the largest employer, and one of the largest employers in the area, Bridgeport Hospital, if you're a nurse, a doctor, you can walk in also to get the attention there if you need it. You can, in that, in that, in that facility, which is directly across the street, you can get everything from your blood tested, to if you have cancer, to get chemtrails. You can get MRIs, you can get everything that you could get short of a overnight hospital stay directly across the street, and you could walk to that. You could walk to the Sacred Heart Business School. You could, you have Wall Fields right next, next door to you. You can walk to the Sacred Heart Library, where you can talk to the Fields, they have a diner there. They have, the, the, the amount of amenities that Sacred Heart has built over there is huge, all within walking distance. On top of the arts that are offered there, the, the basketball games, the baseball games, all within walking distance. And then on top of that, if you drive to work, and there's no, there's no getting away from even your own findings that, and, and just looking at the roads every day, when you got eleven percent of the people on the rails, and you can only put so much, so many type of apartments to the rails, not everybody's a millennial, not everybody wants to live in a, you know, one bedroom apartment and walk, you know, get on a train, there's a lot of people that insist on driving. And then there's a lot of commuting areas that aren't, that you can't get to by rail. Norwalk, Merritt Seven Office Park, North Stanford, Shelton has one of the largest office park regions in the thing, and you still want to live in Fairfield. So there's a tremendous amount of amenities. To say this would not be transit oriented, is it mass tran, is it public transit oriented? No. Is it private transit oriented? Yes.
Well, I mean, you do discuss potential synergy with the bus service.
Correct.
Which frankly is, you know, the, the bus service is, is not adequate, and when you have to travel a certain amount of distance to get to the bus, and when you have to wait so long for it.
We would certainly approach, we would certainly approach the Bridgeport Transit District and bring the bus up, because I also think the bus is important for, to get to the medical complex.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So, so... So you can get to downtown Bridgeport, which things are happening. You can get to Fairchild Wheeler Golf Course, which is right around the corner. There is a lot going on up there that most people in Fairfield almost don't even understand that the, I would be surprised if a lot of people understand that the Fairfield, the Fairchild Wheeler Golf Course is owned by this town, is in the town of Fairfield.
So do you have studies, feasibility studies, data, or, you know, even anecdotal evidence that you, data, evidence that you've gathered about the demand for these units? That would lead us to conclude, yeah, there is a demand for residential that has access to these kinds of amenities?
If you'd like me to do a market study, we can certainly do that. I don't think it's necessary, I think it speaks for itself when you look at what's around it, when you look at the lack of apartment and that multifamily housing in that area, and then you look at, at, look at the Merritt Parkway and how it conducts itself, you look at Park Avenue, how it conducts itself, and you look at all the so-called walkable or short drive amenities that are very, very, very well located.
Okay, very good, thanks. Does anyone else have any questions? Yep, Commissioner Levy?
Just thinking out loud, could there be some sort of provision for providing like a van pool or similar sort of amenity as a condition for qualifying for this district?
A van pool to where?
You know, like, you know, it used to be like Connecticut limousine.
Shuttle.
A shuttle or mini bus.
To where?
The train station.
Airports, train station, downtown, wherever the buses are going to go.
Where do you think? Downtown, the train station.
This commission certainly would have the right to put that in. I, I think it runs a little bit contrary to why somebody would want to live there. If I, if I worked in Merritt Seven, I wanted to live in Fairfield, and I have all these amenities around me, it's the perfect location for me. I'm near shopping. You got, as I said, the Trumbull malls around the corner. You've got a major university, was it second-largest Catholic school in, in New England, right there. I mean, and there's no, there's no housing there. You know what's happened? You had, and I, and I also don't think it's going to be, it's not housing that's being built for the kids. When you look at what, the type of housing that's built for Sacred Heart, if that's a big elephant in the room, the type of housing that's built for Sacred Heart are suites. The kids are paying $700 a bed. They put four, four kids in a home, or they put four kids in an apartment, or they put four kids in a suite, and it's a $3,000 rent. These are going to be one- and two-bedroom units. It's, if anything, you'll maybe have some graduate students, some professors, some nurses, some, some other people that work in the area. I mean, if you, if you, think about it, if you, if you, if you work in Merritt 7, and you want to live in Fairfield, and you live downtown, you're not taking the train to get there. It, it, and it's impossible to get there, but if you can work on the Merritt...
For, 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 you know, a year, I was at High Ridge off 35 Merritt. Drove 95, you know, it's a bear, but, you know.
So, but, just like there is a value in living close to the train, there's a value in living close to a road.
Sure.
If you can cut, whatever you can do to cut down your...
So you mentioned the property's been in the family for 50 years.
I can, I can give you the exact...
No, 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 you don't have to. You don't have to. 40, call it 40, whatever.
I know more than that.
When was the last time there was a house on it?
Been a house there for a long time. Was a house there forever. I don't, I think it was, might have been, I'm not sure.
It's, it's now a vacant lot, right? I mean, the house is...
There was, yeah, they demolished it as part of the previous application, I believe. As part of the previous application for the medical facility, one of the terms of the conjugation I did in the application was that, that, was the house was demolished.
They tore it down. And I think it was vacant at that time.
Yeah.
Right? And it had been for a while. Has anybody, I mean, in the last 10 years, anybody thought about building a residential house?
I, I, I'll check with the owner. They have not gotten any, I can fairly certain...
The owner doesn't want to build a, a, a house on the parcel that's zoned for a single-family?
No, I don't think, no, not at all. They've had no interest in anybody...
I mean, it's right there by the Merritt. They could easily get to the mall.
There'll be something there. What could I tell you? I mean, I don't think it's going to be a single-family house. We're trying to come in with a very well-planned, consistent density with what's gone in town for properties that have an, have an unusual and in a unique location, that will be economically viable for the town, that will be controlled in architecture, design, landscape by the town. The town, if folks don't want that, that's fine. I'm, this, this is our effort, we're trying to reach out because I think this makes a lot of sense in this location. And there's a lot of justifications for it. I'm happy if we're going to continue it tonight, and you want me to do some reach out and come back to you next month, and I'll do that. I'm very comfortable with the application. I'm very comfortable something's going to go there, and I'm very comfortable that something of high density belongs there. I mean, it's, it's got everything that you would seek, that most of these, most of the high-density applications come before you, don't have the controls that are here. They don't have the sewer system. They don't have a light. They don't have, you know, all, all the, all the things that are perfectly designed. They don't have the uniqueness of being near a highway but not impacting a neighborhood. So that's, I feel very...
I think we all got it. We all got it? I think we got it. Thank you. Is there any member of the public that wishes to be heard on this? Yes, sir. Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Wes Haynes. I'm the Executive Director of the Merritt Parkway Conservancy.
I got it right.
You did, yes, thank you. We are a nonprofit membership organization committed to the preservation, revitalization, and stewardship of the parkway. The Conservancy urges you to reject the text amendment proposing the creation of a transit-oriented Merritt Parkway district overlay. The proposed overlay at Merritt Parkway interchanges does not meet transit-oriented development district norms, will not achieve established goals of transit-oriented development, and the overlay's impacts are inconsistent with the goals of Fairfield's 2016 Plan of Conservation and Development. Transit-oriented development is a responsible growth tool that provides increased density incentives for mixed-use development centered around or located near a mass transit station. Transit-oriented development aims to reduce automobile traffic by increasing accessibility to and use of public transportation. The Merritt Parkway is a limited-access highway designed for the, for exclusive use of automobile traffic. It is a major transportation artery, unusual among state roads in that it has a statutory prohibition of bus, truck, and commercial vehicles. It is not, and will never be, a mass transit corridor. Contrary to the applicant's assertions, the on-and-off ramps are not transit stations or locations, and they provide no opportunity to transfer from one mode of transportation to another. You can basically drive onto the Merritt Parkway. You can't park at the entrance ramps and walk onto the Merritt Parkway, or bicycle onto the Merritt Parkway. And certainly you can't operate a jitney or a, or a bus on the Merritt Parkway. Claims that, that the development resulting from the overlay will reduce traffic through local street and alternative transportation modes are dubious and unsubstantiated by data. More likely, this overlay risks development that will increase traffic on local streets, and the parkway conflicting with the Plan of Conservation and Development goal, quote, "to focus on efforts to alleviate congestion and not exacerbate it," on page 43. The Merritt also stands apart from most roads by its listing on the National Register of Historic Places for the quality of its original design and its recognition as a national scenic byway, for the survival of its carefully-designed landscape and bridges. The parkway in Fairfield is one of the most scenic stretches, the kind of area that the Plan of Conservation and Development recommends to preserve and protect from inappropriate construction. Approving this text change, which would encourage the sighting of large-scale five-story construction along the parkway's edge, directly conflicts with the POCD goal and risks, risks significant loss of the Merritt's singular character. The proposed text change conflicts with Fairfield's POCD, would be ineffective, even counterproductive in providing transit-oriented development, and risks great harm to an irreplaceable national treasure. It is without merit and should be rejected. Our concerns are really about the viewshed implications of this. The precedent that it would set, not just for your commission, but for other communities along the parkway, the scale of, that, that's specifically pulled out in this, this proposal. And the, the, listening tonight to the applicant, the, the mixed use that exists around Sacred Heart is an incomplete mixed use. It's really not the kind of complete urban environment that, that TODs are promoting. Thank you. I'll, I can take any questions if you have them, but, yes.
In what respects do you believe that the proposal conflicts with the POCD?
The POCD has two, two different provisions in it under Community Character, I believe it is the section. On page 71, it, it, the, the POCD recommends to preserve and protect scenic, well, important areas of the town that contribute to the town from inappropriate construction. I believe this is inappropriate construction of five stories along the most scenic highway in Connecticut. And, and that, that part of Connecticut, it's owned by the state, but it is really part of Fairfield's identity. And it also conflicts that there's no evidence that this, this is just going to be a large-scale development that will pull more cars up into, up into the, the south edge of the parkway, which they're going to, they're not just going to go on the parkway and off the parkway, they're not on rails. They're going to drive around on local streets, so it's not going to increase traffic on local streets up in the north part of Fairfield.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Anyone else wish to be heard? Mr. Went.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to preempt anybody in the public, but I have limited phone battery left, so I feel like...
Limited phone battery?
I, I need to read something into the record that I, I apologize to this commission. I have hard copy of this on my desk, and I failed to bring it with me this evening. It's a letter from the Economic Development Commission. I just want to read it into the record because I forgot to bring you hard copy.
I see. Very good. Please go.
Stated March 6th, it's addressed to this commission. Dear Commissioners, I am writing on behalf of the Fairfield Economic Development Commission regarding the above-referenced text amendment proposed to establish a transit-oriented Merritt Parkway district. The EDC received a presentation at its regularly scheduled meeting on March 5th from Attorney Ray Rizzio regarding this proposal. While the EDC was not persuaded that the proposed district represents transit-oriented development, we do believe that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission should consider revisions to its regulations that might permit higher levels of density on such sites, on sites such as 5545 Park Avenue than is presently permitted in order to provide an economically viable alternative to set aside development applications filed pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 8-30G. And that is, thank you for your consideration, signed by Kevin Lesko, Chairman of the Economic Development Commission.
Thank you.
I will follow up with hard copy email, but I, I...
Yeah, now that you've read it into the record, it's in the record, but I would appreciate if you circulated the copy of that to the commission.
Yes, that is my intention, but I wanted to make sure it was read into the record to see.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes?
First, I just wanted to thank staff for passing out that data on the Mill Hill School to everybody in the audience. I think it really helps to be able to look at what's going on, and that's the first time that happened, and I really appreciate having that done. I'm not here for, against a residential development. I think Ray Rizzio could sell anything, and he just did a pretty good job selling a residential development at the zone. Anything that's 15% affordable and not 830G, pretty hard for me to say no to it. But I don't support this text amendment, mainly because I think that the concept of transit-oriented is just a myth here. Attorney Rizzio claims that his prose, his proposed TOMPD, quote, "would mirror the character and qualities of other transit-oriented districts in town." So he set for himself a standard to mirror the character and qualities of other transit-oriented districts in our town. He bases that statement on his proposition that Merritt Parkway is mass transit. I know the commuters who are stuck on the parkway feel they're in the masses, but they're certainly not involved in mass transit in any traditional sense. Later on in this text amendment, Attorney Rizzio sort of backs off that promise and says his zone is going to be transit-supportive, which I think is, is a little bit better, but his use of transit-supportive is a term that you have in the, in your regulations. If you look at 13.14.1, you define transit-supportive. You say, quote, "mixed-use neighborhood within walking distance of commuter rail transit of a scale and design that's appropriate to the existing neighborhood context." So transit-supportive does not meet your definition of transit-supportive from your own, your own regulations. I also don't find any congruence between Attorney Rizzio's definitions and the definitions in Title VII Municipalities of Connecticut Statutes, Chapter 103A, Section 7-273B, which says, "Transit facilities include motor bus, minibus, tram line, monorail, rapid transit, or other land transportation systems for the mass movement of persons and goods." This certainly does not qualify in that regard. Single-family cars, no matter how many of them there may be on a roadway, are not mass transit and are not serviced by a transit facility in this case. A transit district is a multimodal nexus. Our existing transit districts have trains at their core with vehicle, pedestrian, and bus elements. Some multimodal hubs in our region, like one in Bridgeport, are sort of centered around a bus depot at its core. They serve vehicle and pedestrian elements. There's also a ferry and a train nearby. The transit district contemplated by the text amendment serves only vehicles of persons residing at the site. There are not likely to be pedestrians drawn to the site, nor any real mass transit to the, to the site. Now, Attorney Rizzio said pedestrians can walk here and there. Without a doubt, that's true. But pedestrians are not going to be drawn to or used this site unless they live there. This text amendment calls for the creation of a residential development with a long acronym and little else. If this residential development and others like it deserve special status, and I think that they might, that status should have independent validity and not be grafted onto or birthed out of our transit-oriented district regulations by torturing plain English definitions. I'm concerned about carving up, atomizing really, our zoning regulations for special purposes that serve only one development. You rejected the High Street text amendments, for instance, but you approved a very convoluted text amendment proposed by Attorney Rizzio for the Unco Road apartment development. We also already have 10.6.7 that allows extra density near Interstate 95 ramps. The proposed density here is about three times what's allowed under 10.6.7, but of course, 10.6.7 itself is a very specific regulation that I think we commonly call the Stone Ridge Regulation. Now Attorney Rizzio offers you another complex text amendment that reads to me like spot zoning couched in bland verbiage. And soon you're likely to have another TOD text amendment from Attorney Rizzio for a 15 Unco Road application. At this rate, Attorney Rizzio will be able to copyright Fairfield zoning regulations. Changes and additions to zoning regulations are inevitable in a town with development vitality, but changes to zoning regulations have planning implications. Might Attorney Rizzio wordsmith a future version of this text amendment, if this one is approved, into a slightly different iteration in the next few months to be used by any or all of the three applications for Black Rock Turnpike developments near Hi-How? Those properties are near a Merritt Parkway entrance, exit, but with north or south of the parkway being an easily-modified technicality. Could Attorney Rizzio or some other creator of text amendment confections spin a reworded version of any property on the post-road, since an inventive legal mind might see the post-road as, quote, "mass transit"? I'm not asking it to reject residential for this property. It sounds like it's a good idea. But this text amendment needs to be reworked if a special represent, special residential district is needed, perhaps modifying it along the lines of the Economic Development Commission letter, which I saw in advance, but of course, keeping Attorney Rizzio's 15% affordable element. I hope you don't shatter the coherence of our zoning regulations by approving the currently proposed language, which is essentially a special-purpose text amendment dressed in a well-tailored but quite empty suit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Going once, going twice? Nope. Mr. Rizzio, rebuttal?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Are we going to take up Attorney Rizzio on the time for him to talk to the neighbors?
Well, I was not going to ask him to hold the meeting open, to hold the hearing open, no. That is a decision that he chooses to make, and he can do so, but I, I don't see why I would do that right now. I mean, we can always table something later on, and if he needs to withdraw and put in a new application to provide for additional information or evidence.
Sure. The commission wanted to meet, if the commission decides to continue, I'd be happy to do so. I wish I had the authority that I did. I thought I was coming here trying to do a good thing.
The authority from who?
Of, to just modify your regulations and rewrite your regulations on my own, but, I think...
No, I mean, I...
I think, I think what's important is, it's hard, it's hard to write regulations that keep up with the times, that keep up, that uniformly apply against all properties in all zones, that meet desired requirements, that, that properties that are susceptible to overdevelopment, susceptible to taking away the commission's authority to review plans, to act on plans, to, basically, that... My whole goal in coming before you tonight and asking to come before you was that there was a certain project that was contemplated, and I felt that I was trying to work a regulation together that would give the commission authority to control the development of this site versus some court or some other, some other, under some other circumstances. I thought it'd been very successful in the past when it's given an appropriate location, given unique sites, given sites that have unique characteristics. If the commission struggles with the, I mean, I could have very easily called it a university and medical zone or something like that because you're near the largest medical facility. What I was trying to do was you had similar properties in town that had unique locations that are susceptible to...
that are susceptible to overdevelopment, that's not controlled by the commission, and come up with a regulation with consistent density, consistent density that the commission's found comfortable, in a location where I would see the density would be appropriate, where the infrastructure was built there. If people were offended by a misnomer, I apologize, it was not meant to insult the Conservancy of the Merit Parkway, considering across the street we have a 250,000-square-foot medical facility, 225,000 square foot medical facility, and 500 square, 500 car, five, uh, three-or-four-story concrete parking garage. So, we're not here to, we, we respect the Merit Parkway, there's plenty of, this property will be shielded from the Merit Parkway by, there's a very good setback there, there's wetlands there, there's heavy, heavy forestry there. In the event this, you adopted a text amendment or a text amendment like this, we would be able, you would be able to control the landscape, the view, whether it's appropriate or it's not. I don't think, in, in the event of set-aside developments, that any of that comes into play. So, this is my attempt to come to the commission with a, any, a unique location, something that, as you can see from your Economic Development warrants, we believe, the look at high density, increase the affordable component, and give the, give the, give a, the commission an application or a, a project that they could control that fit with the neighborhood with which it exists. And that's, that's, that's the essence of this application. So, I'm, I'm happy to work on the, the naming, I'm happy to work on anything this commission would like. I'd like to see it be developed in accordance with the regulations and not in accordance with the courts, and that's why I'm here.
I think we, I think this commission appreciates that this site may in fact be suitable for, you know, residential development. It's higher density, it's certainly a possibility, and I think we appreciate the 15% affordable component, coming forward with that affirmatively. The question in my mind is whether this fits within our transit-oriented development regulations. And, you know, I think you've, you've tried to address that, and I think it's just something that we need to consider.
Correct. And I, and if the commission... I think it's a good project. I think it's a project this commission should control, I think it's a project that's economically a very viable project for the town without any subsequent negative impact. I think if the commission struggles with where it appears, or where this type of development appears within the regulations, my clients and I would certainly be open to working with staff to come in with a, a, a possible text amendment that would, maybe the commission would feel more comfortable with a, so that it wouldn't use, they're not my words, but that affect corrupt your transit-oriented zones, which you've worked hard at.
Very good. Commissioner Levy is next.
I mean, how critical is it that it be linked as a transit-oriented district? I mean, that would allow consistently to have a much higher density, as many as 90 units or 50 per acre. Why wouldn't something like 10.6.7, which addresses 17 units per acre near the thruway exits, would that be a, perhaps a better regulation that we might consider?
That would be, that would be certainly something I would take back to my client. The reason of pricking, picking the transit-oriented district, in my mind, why I came up with this, was I was trying to juggle density that this commission seemed to be comfortable with, surrounded by commuting capability, and in an area that wouldn't impact a neighborhood or traverse to parts unknown that this commission couldn't control. So, that was the theory behind coming up with trying to not have some floating zone that this commission might lose control over, be surprised at someday. And I figured tying it to the access, figuring out who would want to live there, um, why they would want to live there, had a lot to do with me coming up with, I, you know, I didn't pull it out of any planning hat, I, this was Ray, it is Ray Rizio 101, but I tried to figure out who would live there, why they would live there, and what made sense. And when you look at 71%, 76% or 71% of your people, of the people of the town commuting by car, I know the people that can't stand driving 15 minutes or 10 minutes to just get on Mill Plain Road, or to get on 95, or to get on the Merit, I thought tying it to transit was important because honestly, I thought the people that would want to live there are the people that are going to be using the Merit Parkway.
Very good. Commissioner Levy, anything more?
Nothing further.
But I have no, but I, I have no pride of ownership...
Understood. We got it.
Happy to even change my name on the application, like Chris Russo applied.
But you're not, you're not, this is purely residential, this, what your proposal is, no commercial.
Problem with, yeah, we looked, we did, we have looked at mixed use over the years, and the problem, the problem with mixed use is, you can never do retail there because the property sits down probably 20 to 30 feet. You're going to have to have parking and then building up. The previous application for the surgical center, the parking had to come down and around the surgical center, had to sit up on top of it, and it was, it was just, it was very difficult.
Okay.
The other good thing about the residential is it, it, it bleeds versus everybody coming in, in a commercial district typically in waves. And retail would just die up there. You wouldn't want retail up there, it wouldn't do anything, but the only thing you could do up there is a, a 7-Eleven and a Taco Bell for the college kids.
A motel, a liquor store, and a...
Yeah.
Flower shop.
I'm trying to work with you, what do you want me to tell you?
Yeah. Commissioner Francis?
Was he thinking of apartments only or possibly condos?
The, the, the intent of the developers to deliver apartments. One of the things that we all run into trouble with a little bit with regard to the condominium, especially given the fact that we were going to increase the affordable units, is, we all know about discrepancies in market value, affordable value, and...
Rental versus...
Rental, rental, when you bring in the affordable component, makes the most amount of sense and is in the best position to absorb, especially when you increase it from 10 to 15%.
I do hear a lot of demand for those individual-type condos, like they have in Oxford.
I mean, we represent them, Pulte Homes, yeah.
And across the street, it, it moves something across from the front.
The problem with...
A lot of demand for that individual and not the big apartment.
Here's the problem with two acres, when you have two acres, you have to have the same size driveway aisle, you have to have the same, and if you try to put townhouses, you just, in that location, you just couldn't fit it, unless you can build, park underneath, and build the building, it's really the only way to develop the property. The, I can tell you right now, the demand is huge for quality apartments in the right location. I can tell you that I represent the Uncle Road property, we have had, must have had 50 to 100 people asking when they can get in there, I think, and even development, I think you can check with staff, I think they get more, a lot more inquiries as to when it'll be available to be inhabited versus any of the construction, which was heavy construction that went on there over the years. So, there is a place for this type for everybody. I think you have to understand there's three times, seven times as many people driving as they are on the rails. I think the people want to be close to where they have to get on the road. It's unfortunate, I think, I wish we could all get on trains, and trains went everywhere, but it's, it's not there. I'm happy to work with staff, to modify the language, to come up with a more appropriate zone if you feel this corrupts the transit-oriented district, and there's other ways that we can make it with increasing the density. I'd like to come before you, I'd like to get something approved that wasn't a set-aside, jam-it-down-your-throat application, or I wouldn't be here, and I won't be here should that happen. So, that's where we are. I appreciate your time, I, I know I've always talked more than I should, I told Matt I'd be quiet tonight, and I, once again, proved myself wrong. But I, I thank you for your patience, I thank you for your time, I'd be happy to work with the commission, because I'd like to see this work on this property.
Very good. Thank you very much. Close the public hearing and adjourn the meeting.